Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming. Our host has muted everyone. Would the school committee people and the superintendent please unmute yourselves? I'll now call the roll. Ms. Shumway.
Here.
Mr. Petrowski is still missing, yes? Yes. Ms. Dykett.
Here.
Ms. Bells.
Here.
And Ms. Guyer is here. I ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I can't see my flag, Mike. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag. States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Mr. Superintendent, adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, we have a couple tonight. We need to add some personnel to Section 2C. And we need to... You were sent an updated... The school committee sent an updated form, long form today. So I'm not sure why that was under the adjustment. And I need to close my door because the vacuum, you probably can hear the vacuum.
Yeah.
Basically, the new personnel is what's new.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of Winthrop School Committee meeting July 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Ms. Shumway.
Yes.
Is Mr. Petrowski, no? Ms. Dykett.
Yes.
Ms. Bells.
Yes.
Ms. Guyer, yes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of Winthrop School Committee Special Meeting of July 29th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway.
Yes.
Ms. Dykett.
Yes.
Ms. Bells.
Yes.
Motion passes, 4-0. See, personnel. I'll entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Margaret Martin as a Winthrop Grade School teacher.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Lad, I can't see you. I hope that I'm not embarrassing you, but did you intend to say anything about Ms. Martin? Oh, I see a comment. Ms. Randall.
Yes.
You're on.
So, so, thank you. I do have a comment in regards to Ms. Margaret Martin. She is a U M O graduate and currently working on her educational psychology masters in research and curriculum design through the University of Alabama. She has two years' experience as a fifth-grade teacher at Union County Public School System in North Carolina. And when I was checking references, the response was, definitely hire her. She was one of five finalists among 20 who were recognized as a Beginning Teacher of the Year in her county in North Carolina. She grew up in Manchester. When asked why Winthrop, Maggie reported with, responded with, I have heard great things about Winthrop. She currently resides in Kent Hill, and we are thrilled to have Maggie join our Team of Champions at Winthrop Grade School.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. I enjoy your enthusiasm greatly. And the additional comments? All in favor? Well, I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway.
Yes.
Ms. Dykett.
Yes.
Ms. Bells.
Yes.
Motion passes, 4-0.
Ms. Guyer?
You almost forgot my name, didn't you? I have to get a name tag out there.
Mr. Petrowski is now with us, if you want to include him.
Thank you. Mr. Petrowski, how do you vote? Someone needs to unmute Mr. Petrowski. Maybe I should.
I'm unmuted. No, you want me to be unmuted.
There, I'm there, Mr. Petrowski. I'm not sure when you came aboard, but are you in favor of the Winthrop Grade School nominee of Margaret Martin? Oh, I just... Yes? Visual indication of yes. And we're watching your TV screen in the back, Mr. Petrowski. Okay. So, Colleen, I'd like to amend that vote to a passage of 5 to 0. Motion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Thea Bridges as fourth-grade teacher.
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Randall, are you going to speak to her as well?
I would like to. And then I wondered if, I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but I missed my opportunity to speak to Gabrielle Stewart, who was hired the last time. Could I also speak to her after, I think, speak about Thea?
Yes, I will try to remember to do that after we vote on Thea.
Okay, thank you. So Thea Bridges, she is a U M F graduate. She has a year's experience with the Augusta School System as a first-grade teacher in Augusta. And from her references, she was described as incredibly passionate, dedicated, and made great connections with kids and families. She currently resides in Augusta. And when asked why Winthrop, she responded that she was looking for an area in a community that she would want to live in, and Winthrop was one of those places. So we are also excited to welcome Thea to our Team of Champions at WGS.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway.
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dykett.
Yes.
Ms. Bells.
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0. Congratulations to both Ms. Martin and Ms. Bridges, if you're on our Zoom meeting with us. And Ms. Randall, you wanted to speak to another?
Yes, if I may. Thank you, Ms. Guyer. Gabby Stewart was brought on with us at the last meeting, and I just want to share that she is also a U M F graduate. She, we've had the opportunity to have her in our building at Winthrop Grade School as a long-term first-grade sub this past January into March. She also did some other long-term subbing opportunities before she joined us at WGS. She's passionate with incredible work ethic, was what was shared when I checked on references. And when asked why Winthrop, while Gabby responded with, she grew up here in Winthrop and liked the strong sense of community that Winthrop has. And she continues to be a resident of Winthrop, and we're thrilled to have her join us also.
Excellent. Thank you so very much, Ms. Randall.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion now to approve the nomination of Rebecca Corcoran. I hope I said that somewhat correctly. As a Winthrop High School Guidance Counselor.
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, is Mr. Campbell with us? Is he going to?
So Rebecca Corcoran has years of experience in the adult ed life, helping students who have found it to be challenging to get through high school and into college. She's worked both in Augusta and Bangor in that role. Former experience also includes working as an elementary guidance counselor. When asked what her strongest qualities were, she repeated that she was a strong student. And when we did references on this young lady, that was, came out glowing. She is there for the students, and that's what we're looking for, to serve our students in our high school guidance department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Any other discussion on Ms. Corcoran? Ms. Shumway.
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dykett.
Yes.
Ms. Bells.
Yes.
I voted in the affirmative also. Motion passes, 5-0. You'll notice that for your information only, that we've hired Chris Cray to help out Mr. Delisle as district computer technician. Excuse me. Superintendent's report, please, Mr. Hodgkin.
Okay. You received a copy of the finance report. So I'm not sure what type of information you're looking to give to me. I can tell you that things are kind of where we'd expect them to be. We're a month through the year, so 8% through. Our expenditures are kind of all over the place because we have summers when we order most of our supplies. So that, those lines are a little bit more down. And then there are some lines that we haven't expended at all yet. But overall, if you go to the last page, the very last page, it's just that one line. It says, and we have 92.35% of our revenues left, which is exactly what you'd expect, it's about 8%. And if you look at the other page, you know, it's, we're at 97. The total of articles, 1 through 11, bottom third to the last line, on that first page, we're at 91.76% of our warrant has been purchased. Or we use those revenues to get those expenditures. So we're right where we would expect to be at this point. We're obviously, I'm obviously continuing to look for places where we can save some money in the expectation of a curtailment. And I would just add that to my report under finance that had meetings in the last... We'll meet every Thursday with the Kennebec Valley Superintendents. And yesterday, I met with the Zoom meeting with West Main Educate, the West Main Superintendents. And this, the whole discussion of curtailment was a big topic there. And people are all over the place in terms of their predictions. The other superintendents that I've met with have talked about not doing any planning at all. Others are doing kind of what we're doing, which is to continue to look for places where we know we can... I got some additional information today. I don't have an update for the committee tonight. But I had Amanda and Ida doing some work on expenditures and things that were not in that original list. And we had a central office staff meeting today. So they unearthed a few other places for me. A place that I just let you know, because you're going to be hearing all kinds of different things about reimbursement. We have applied for reimbursement for FY '20 expenditures that we incurred from COVID, hoping to get reimbursement from FEMA. And, but it's not certain. I mean, it's pretty certain we're going to get the reimbursement, but it's not certain we're going to get the revenue. The revenue might go to the town, not the, not us. So if it comes to us, it'll be applied against our curtailment list. If it doesn't come to us, then obviously it won't. So we are up over $300,000. If the curtailment is 10%, as we are, that seems to be the highest number anybody is talking about, as 10% of the state's contribution, then that would be somewhere around $560,000. And we're just over $300,000. So I think we're in better shape than some people, and still a lot of work to go. But, so that's just that. Let me see what else on my list.
May I ask a question before you move on?
Sure.
Now, you said FEMA funds. Is that somehow different from the CARES Act funding?
Yes, totally, totally different. FEMA is a federal emergency medical, whatever.
But I hadn't heard, or I don't recall, that they were going to reimburse us for our COVID expenses.
Yeah, Bernice from the town office asked us about a month ago to try to articulate the expenses we incurred in FY '20. And we were told by the, by our local, I think our chief, I don't know if it's fire chief or chief of police, that, and I know the town manager had mentioned something before. And so we got that list, and all we really know now is that we submitted the list, and we will be, we will be getting reimbursement. But who the "we" is has not been defined yet, as I said before.
Oh, okay, got it. And may I ask one more question?
Sure.
So for all the warrants that have been paid, you know, I think you said this number, but I didn't catch it. What percentage remaining should we have here on our warrant articles? Is it 80% that we've spent 20? No. So what should we have here?
Ideally, in a perfect world, you'd spend about 8% a month. And slightly more than 8%, actually, because that, if you add those up times 12, that equals 100%. It's like eight and a quarter. So, but it doesn't ever work out that perfectly, because like I said, the... Particularly some of the lines that deal with purchasing of supplies and stuff, we purchase more in the summer than we do during the rest of the year. So those are going to be over expended, but they're not. Surprisingly, they're not a lot more than the...
So in a perfect world, we should not be below 88%, say, as a round number. We should not be below 88% in a technical world.
That should, that should cause a flag and then warrant an explanation of why we, why we have expended beyond that.
Okay, so that's what I was...
So for instance, let me give you, let me give you Article 5 student staff. That's a lot of supplies. Where a lot of the stuff comes out of. So you can see at this point where we've expended 80, or we have 84%. So we've expended just over 15 and a half percent, which is slightly more than you would have expected.
Okay. I'd like to just delay because I have a comment here, and I don't know if Mike has addressed it yet. So, Mr. Delisle, I have a comment that says, I'm told others are waiting to join. So I don't know if you've addressed that yet or not. Okay, Mr. Superintendent, please proceed.
Okay, so related to all of this, we've been spending a lot of time with the administrative team and with people from the DOE and people from different companies or whatever, trying to figure out the COVID relief funds. We, I referred to the CRF funds. We have two basic pools of money related to COVID relief that we're working with. One is what I refer to as the First CARES Act. That's approximately $160,000. And have put together some numbers. Mr. Lad will be making that application on our behalf. And so far, we, out of the 160, we have essentially going to apply for about 159 and change. So we're pretty much have spent a whole 160. The second pool of money is what is referred simply as the CRF funds, COVID Relief Fund. And that's about $658,000 for Winthrop. And we're in the process now. I was on the phone today with Siemens. I had mentioned them before. They gave us a proposal, and those O2 devices, very, very expensive. So I'm trying to negotiate a better price for us. I've been on the phone, I got information from Northeast Charter. I think Larry is on this call. That was very helpful. There's multiple pieces to that. But, so, you know, we're looking at a number of other things, like, I know one of the things that you'll, will be coming up later is looking at some additional staffing, even short-term, to assist with cleaning or bus monitors or all those types of things. Those are all on that list. And right now, we're, you know, going through the process of trying to figure out, you know what it... I don't think you lose, you can still see me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I pulled up the COVID costs on my, I'm just going to give you, I won't give you all the breakdown, but four additional bus runs are on there, barriers for the driver to socially distance them, daily bus cleaning, daily bus, well, PPE purchases, additional PPE purchases, bus monitors, extra cleaning for the buildings, full-time subs, O2 devices, all those types of things. And so we're still in the process. What I don't have on this list now, but you, it's already been ordered. And Mr. Delisle has provided me with the money, so I just don't have it in a spreadsheet yet, is the technology purchases that we've made. And I, he continues to assure me, as early, as most recent is today, that those devices have not only been ordered, but they will be delivered on time. And I'm very skeptical. I'll believe that when I see them. But, you know, we are, they are on order. So there's a lot to this. This is a lot of work. And so we're in the process of best using those relief funds, COVID relief funds, for getting what we need to safely open our schools. Again, I mentioned, but let me look at the agenda. The...
Jim, this is Mike, I'll just chime in. I'm told those should ship next week, so hopefully that holds true, and we'll get a shipping confirmation next week.
Hey, my fingers crossed, Mike. I don't know if you can see that. We'll see. That'll be awesome. It's really important, because one of the things that I haven't been able to get completed, as I was hoping tonight, tonight for the board, was to look at... I have quite a list, and I actually want to publicly thank particularly Mrs. Chris and Mr. Cabdal for providing me, here's, I'm just showing you this. These are the two documents I was trying to collapse into ones to provide to the school board about the, why we need the additional time. I will have that done tomorrow. I will get it out to the school committee as specifically as we can. But the training on the new devices and the things that relate to the remote learning and all, you know, how to do the programs that we're asking our staff to do are a big part of what those eight days will be. But Mrs. Chris, all on her own, has come up with seven and a half days. That's before I add any of my stuff. So it's very legitimate. And she did a great job of also talking about what we should be doing on those. You know, if we stay with the four days, one-day remote, you know, what that time will be used for. But it's great work. Any other questions on that before I move on?
So I can't see everybody on my screen. So if any of the school committee people have a question about that, you need to speak up. Okay, I don't hear anybody. Go ahead.
Okay. So I was asked to talk about A-Team Retreat. And we had our A-Team Retreat on August 4th. And really outstanding meeting. We had a pretty lengthy agenda, and we basically took the whole day. And, you know, I think we have things planned as well as we could. I have a copy of that agenda in front of me. I had it on my screen, but for some reason, it's not there. Yeah, so it was, it was really good planning for us as a team to have that whole day together and to, you know, we talked about everything from what we had left for hiring to do, to what we need to do to open the buildings, to the short form, the long form, and a lot of the real, you know, nuts and bolts of opening school. But more than anything else, it allowed us an opportunity to sort of, I don't know, set the tone, I think in a very positive way, for addressing this year, which we know is going to be pretty challenging. Nice to have everybody there. I see Josh is on this, and I think Chef Erin is, I saw her on here too. It was just, it was nice to have everybody there, to have an opportunity to hear what other people are thinking and doing, and doing some planning. So I will get those minutes out. When those minutes are done, I will, I don't think they specifically require the school committee's approval, but I will certainly send them out to the school committee for you to have, to have some sense of what we did on that day. I will say, we were also very ambitious. We had, I'd set aside two days, and we basically completed the work in one day. And we had great food. That's a side note. Opening day, we have an administrative team meeting on Tuesday next week, and our opening day agenda is going to be on there. I will tell you that, particularly for the school committee, if you are able to, I will send you a copy of the agenda, because we're going to have to, at least from my message, the message from the superintendent is going to take four meetings, because we can't have more than 50 people in a gathering. So we believe that's going to be two meetings at the grade school and then the middle school separately and high school separately. And there'll be no dancing from the superintendent, but there may be some other entertainment-type thing. And it won't be comedy either, because I can't do that. So I would certainly take a look at the agenda, and when those times are set, and if you are able to attend, that would be great. It'd be really good. Let me see. I wanted to just also, I mentioned briefly that we had a meeting with the West Main Educational Collaborative superintendents yesterday. I think there were 12 of us that were on the meeting. But basically, we didn't make any decisions. It really was about just kind of seeing what people are doing for remote learners. And some of the smaller schools, this is, this is an idea that I heard the school committee talk about before, and I think it's, has some legs, but we won't really know exactly what to do with it. But it's that whole notion of if we had slots, I guess for lack of a better term, we had teachers who were going to designate as teaching remotely, you know, would we be able to share those services with our neighboring districts? And it first came up as a discussion with our regional service center members, which is RSU2 in Moranica. And so that's been, it's been talked about a little bit, but it's now being talked about in a bigger way with the West Main Educational Collaborative, of which most of us are members of, well, at least Moranica and ourselves are members of both. So, but what I will tell you, and you'll hear this answer a lot tonight, unfortunately, for people who want hard and fast answers, that we really couldn't make a decision about what that was going to look like, because we won't know who might be available or who's in need of those services until we get the kids back and do some reassessment. Which again is, I really thank the school committee for that, giving that one day for us to process and plan, because these, this is just an example of the types of things we're going to need to process and plan for. And I think that's all I have. And there's a lot more. It's been crazy.
Thank you very much. Moving on then to the chair's report. I draw the school committee's attention to the summary report of a MSMA Region 8 meeting that I attended by Zoom. In attendance were four or five superintendents, four or five school board chairs. Steve Bailey and Eileen, what's your last name, please? Help.
Eileen King.
Thank you. Eileen King from M S S A. And three of the MSMA board people that have attended all of the regional meetings. So it's pretty nice that they have a really good idea of what all of the various regions are doing. And seeing as we're Region 8, they've had seven other meetings with seven other groups of school systems worth of experience to share with the rest of us. So essentially, the agenda question was, what are schools doing for their restarting plans? And where in the process are the other school systems? And what are the questions about the process? So my summary is just some, some ideas that people in different school systems have tried to do and have been successful, so it was a nice sharing. One, back-to-school committee had just taken the school committee on a sample student day. They made the whole school committee ride the school bus, mask and distancing and disinfecting. And they went to all of their buildings. They saw sample classrooms of how the classrooms would be set up for all of the students and the signs on the floor for traffic... floor for traffic and that went over very well B some schools have already voted on their plans some are voting tonight and the rest of this week many schools committees including the subcommittees and teachers and one of the schools had a total of 96 people involved with their steering committee in subcommittees one superintendent has had a remote staff meeting to explain the plan and elicit their questions really not to answer a lot of questions because we're still trying to answer a lot of those questions but to get their concerns and questions so that at a future staff meeting there could be an attempt to answer their concerns and questions D one superintendent is making a video to parents and community that would be on their website and then their principals are going to make videos which will be a tour of their building for this for the students and the and the parents to see to show the students all of the changes and maybe make some suggestions about how they behave when they first get off the bus or get dropped off at school on that first day so it's really those principals by video have just given a tour of their of their respective buildings E we need to well you all know that we do need to vote on the calendar some schools student populations are going up especially along the coast the Camden's and and Rocklands those those student populations are going up because of the summer visitors any of the summer folks that own a home that is three seasons right now that they think that there's a way that they could make four seasons have decided to not go home and they're going to stay up here because the state of Maine has such a low infection rate so they're trying to enter their students into some of these other school systems Camden has said no more and I don't know how they can do that in a public school system but if they get any more students they won't be able to go to school full time without dividing it up into cohorts which they don't want to have to do so they've they've said they're not going to entertain any more students so we'll see how that goes Bitterford and Gorham superintendents have collaborated and have produced a staff handbook that has been emailed to superintendents by the MSMA it covers a lot of things and one of the questions that we had had was about out of state travel so they they've done that to help out other superintendents and the MSMA has then distributed to all of the superintendents so we hope that that is helpful the DOE has resources that schools can use one of the questions was you know we know that some of these workshops want to we know in some of the workshops that we want our teachers to gain information about how to successfully train and teach remotely and and or synchronously so the DOE has a lot of resources and the one of the schools I think it was Maranica Cook intends to use some of those resources that are now on the DOE website as part of their workshop days every school plan has to include the state's six safety requirements or go totally remote or no CARES Act money so for example one school one one chair school committee chair is having some difficulty they belong to an RSU RSU with a very large school committee and some of the school committee for one town want have said yes we'll have masks and some of the school committee for another town think that they don't want mass and and the fact of the matter is if we want the CARES Act money we need we need to approve a plan that includes all six of the safety requirements in that plan or we will be ineligible for CARES Act money so we hope that armed with that that poor school committee chair goes back and can pull people together transportation has been a difficult issue for all of the schools at the Region 8 meeting to figure out how can they afford the extra bus runs and in a few of the school systems parents of in order to not have to pay for extra bus runs parents have been asked if they could drop off and pick up their students so that we don't have to have those extra bus runs or they don't have to have those extra bus runs so that's how they were going to attack the problem last week anyway SNP has also been difficult for schools to figure out and we ran out of time and weren't able to have any additional discussion about SNP difficulty so I hope that summary has been informative we'll move on to standing committees finance committee Jana.
Nothing needed to report.
Thank you policy we did not have immediate policy committee meeting today nothing new to report negotiations Ms. Somway nothing curriculum Mr. Superintendent we're not there yet.
No but I would I would like to report that we do have interviews Kristen is on the subcommittee I mean not the subcommittee the hiring committee we are doing interviews for the director of teaching and learning tomorrow afternoon evening.
Great and while you're there Mr. Superintendent would you is there anything new on the renovation new construction or grade school maintenance?
No not at this point nothing to add since I did reach out I mentioned the last meeting that I had met with Tom Seekins from Siemens to do a walkthrough I subsequently had a conversation with Stan Sawyer from the from the department who's with the group that does building constructions and stuff but he is he said he would get back to me when he could but I would not count on that being for a few months because he is the only person in the state who's doing the approval of the CRF funds he's the one he's the one I wrote to to get permission to I sent him the list of areas we're looking at and so he's the only person in the state that's doing that work right now so he's going to be pretty busy for a few months.
Right are there usually more people in that office?
No that's a that's a new thing they create well yeah there are but they're they're also doing Scott Brown is the head of that office and it may be possible to reach out to him but right now they're they're all very very busy dealing with building issues around the COVID issue.
Thank you Mr. Campbell we're we're all set to listen to a wonderful presentation about AP testing.
So I want to thank Mr. Hodgkins for inviting me to do this presentation anytime I get to brag about our student I I kind of like it so I'm going to share my screen well I think I am.
I see you you're okay.
No I want to share my computer screen.
He wants to put some documents up there Joe.
I don't know where's Ms. Shaw when I need a.
But Mr. Lyles with us. So so Ms. White writes a comment to me that it is disabled no attendees can share.
Mike can you give me access again please?
I I actually I've already made you a co-host. So on the bottom of your screen you should be able to hover over the menu and share screen.
So now I get a white box that shows desktop whiteboard iPhone iPhone pad system preferences Google Chrome Google Chrome unknown.
Say that again sorry.
Well I got a list of things.
Are you on a PC are you on a Mac what what type device are you on?
I'm on my MacBook Air.
So if you hover over the screen for the meeting on the bottom you should see an option for share screen.
Yes.
If you click share screen what happens?
I get a white screen that allows me to choose from which source and then I choose my desk desktop now it says open system preferences that okay to do?
Yes.
And I have to allow Zoom. Okay this is not good so I'm going to minimize you folks and just talk my way through my presentation. Give me just a second my apologies.
If you want to try it Mark I might be able to walk you through the steps.
So I think I'll just I'll talk and then I will share the presentation with calling tomorrow so that it can be sent out to the school committee so as many of you aware our students were sent home in March and early April we got notification from college board that the AP exams were still going to be taken by our students in May the AP college board changed the format.
Don't know Gramps.
Instead of taking two parts the test was narrowed down to a single.
Grandpa what is it like moving? Ms. Brewer could you?
And Mike Ginny can you hear me now? Okay so the test was narrowed down from two sections down to one the multiple choice the 55 multiple choice questions were eliminated and students had only the constructed response to answer to and even those portions of the test were modified depending on which exam students were taken for example the calculus exam remained the same with two construct response questions and another example would be the English went from three essays that they had to write down to just one of the students in AP classes we had 29 students take the AP exam we had several students taking multiple exams in fact I think we had one student do five exams this spring he did four classes here at Winter High School and one online there were a total of 64 exams completed 17 juniors and 12 seniors participated and of those 29 students we had 18 students that were recognized as being AP scholars this spring in order to be an AP scholar you need to have taken four or more exams with a score of three or greater on three of your exams.
Wow.
We had two students who were recognized as be AP scholar with honors and they took four more exams with three or greater on all of their exams and we had one young man who took four more exams scored three or greater on all exams with scores of four greater on three of them and he was recognized as AP scholar distinction. As I shared computers were modified so that it was all computer based construct response students who did have technology issues and we had a couple that I'm aware of that were able to download the tests but when they had completed the portion of the test and went to try to back to load it back up they were unable to do that so they had to retake the exam in June. In calculus eight exams were administered for AB and although the majority did not earn a three the average of 2.75 for all exams was above the average of two of the four previous classes who took the AB calculus exam our score was slightly less than the state average of 2.93 and a global average of 3.06 we had four students who took the calculus BC exam all three earned a three or better with an average of four our school average was greater than the state and the global BC calculus is a class that we do not necessarily offer every year we did have enough interest last year and we have enough interest to offer it again this year chemistry exams seven exams were administered four scores of three or greater class average of the seven exams was a 2.71 it was the highest in the last five years average was even greater than the state and just slightly below the global average. English language composition exam results 18 exams were administered of the 18 15 of our students scored three or better class average was 3.22 it is the highest score in the last five years average it was also higher than the state average of 3.07 and a global average of 2.95. English literature and composition exam results four exams were administered all four scored three or better average was 3.25 the highest in a five-year period this average was also slightly higher than the state average of 2.99 and the global average of 2.84. Psychology nine exams were administered of the nine eight scored three or better the average score was 3.22 second highest in the last five years slightly higher than the state average of 3.02 and the global average of 3.21. US history exam results 12 exams were administered 10 of the 12 students scored three or more on the exam average was 3.17 highest in the five-year period slightly higher than the state average of 2.88 and the global average of 2.82. Want the committee to be aware that Winter High School is expanding our AP offerings we have picked up enough students in Spanish so that we're able to offer a AP Spanish class this year we also give students access to AP classes through virtual high school we had two students this year who completed AP government we currently have students enrolled in AP environmental science and AP art history for the current school year. Our next steps will be to analyze the results including student responses to identify patterns and adjust teaching practices or our curriculum to address concerns if any are there any questions?
I don't have well I do have one question but I have a comment that's just outstanding and I and I hope that I know you will have a lot to communicate to students and and teachers in the next month but I hope that one of those comments will be when the time is right to just herald the teachers the AP teachers and those AP students that took on that rigor and that challenge and and congratulations that's outstanding during a challenging time and you know it almost seems as though maybe we ought to do this remote thing more often but you know I didn't really say that I guess one one question that maybe you could ferret out at some point in time although I hate to give you any more work to do but do you have any kind of a idea about how many of those students that got threes and fours that were our graduates have gotten college credit because of those threes and fours in their AP and and what kind of money? because of those threes and fours in their AP and what kind of money we're talking about has been saved by them allowing, being able to, to do that in high school?
Ginny, that's an excellent question. I do not know about seniors, but I do know by working with the seniors and building their schedule for this year, we had some students that were interested in doing English online through either KBCC or UMA. And the questions I asked them was to check him with the colleges they're interested in to see whether or not they would be accepting AP scores. And we had two young ladies who will be receiving college credit for college composition because of their AP scores in their English last year. So my guess is our seniors also have reaped the benefits of these classes.
Right, right. Thank you very much. Okay, other school committee people, I can only see Joe, so you need to speak up. And you've all been remuted again, so you'll have to unmute.
Ginny, I'll.
Yes, Ms. Shumway.
I just want to say congratulations to the teachers and the students. And I just think that this is a tremendous show of our students' resiliency to have such success in a very trying situation and experiment. Because the college board had never done online testing before. Excuse me, they changed the, the format that they had been preparing for all year and had to, and had to very quickly adjust to that. And I can't even emphasize enough that if you go from, you know, a handful of questions for calculus down to two, that's a very small margin of error. You know, with just having two, two problems. So congratulations, kudos to all that were involved in the success and, and I look forward to the continued success.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell, for making more and more AP courses available to our kids that want to take on that challenge and that rigor. Any other school committee people? Seeing none. Oh, Mr. Petrowski.
Oh, and me too.
Okay, you're, you're number two, Ms. Bells. Mr. Petrowski.
Question for the principal and I'd echo everything that Kristen said. This is incredible news. Fantastic. And a lot of people need to be thanked for it. Did they have any particular training to get ready for online testing?
No, these students went into this completely, you know, other than we are back in the middle school, I don't believe we've done any type of formal assessment online. So this was all new to them. And as Kristen pointed out, they really, even though the college board gave them a little insight as to what to expect or what will be eliminated. This was a very new experience for them and, and, you know, as both Ginny and Kristen said, I, I am very proud of the work that they did. Even those kids who, you know, I know that I had two, the first round that couldn't upload and they didn't give up. They went back in June and did it again. So, you know, I am very proud of them as well.
Thank you, Ms. Bells.
I just wanted to say kudos to the teachers who were there to support the kids through this and got, and obviously had them very well prepared. So thank you to the teachers as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. Mr. Campbell, thank you so much. That was some really nice, good news. Now we're going to have an astounding presentation by Mr. Stoneton on MPA, MPA thoughts and decisions and updates. Mr. Stoneton?
Well, like most everything that we're dealing with, with the COVID situation, things have changed on a daily basis. Probably eight to 10 days ago, I spoke with Mr. Hodgkin in the steering committee and informed them of the MPA updates, which led me to a presentation that has now become null and void as of 24 hours ago. I want to first of all, just inform you that if you have a chance to compliment or see one of your coaches that work, please do. Understand now that during the summer workout since July 6th, they've had to partner with me and do a assessment on a daily basis. That they had to check to make sure that the kids were okay to show up. They had to also make sure that the kids were in pods and they were separated. And it was quite, quite a lot of work. The intent was that on July 6th, we would start a four-phase process to return to fall sports. We are now in phase three. We had followed all the guidelines and rules with the hope that we would have a fall season showing that it could be done. I was part of an MPA committee yesterday and they informed us that Eileen King had met with them and expressed that, that things needed to slow down a little bit so that we can make sure that everybody was on the same page. From the original memo that I was going to report out tonight, they had moved fall sports back to September 8th to allow for things to open up, then have two weeks of preseason, then start competition. Within that conversation with Eileen yesterday, she informed the MPA that it was the intent that, as we all know, fields in courts are classrooms. Therefore, they expect that those regulations from the DOE are going to be followed. What that means is they still expect students will be socially distancing at three feet as well as wearing masks. What that translates to, in my professional opinion, is that it would be very difficult to allow any sports to exist in a competitive manner due to those restrictions. They have not canceled the season, meaning the MPA or any other organizations, they're going to go back and talk to the Department of Education and see if there's any way that they can look at some sort of review of those guidelines to see if it would be possible. In such sports as lacrosse and football, it's impossible to not have to have contact with somebody. So that's where you can see the issue starts to, starts to present itself. Another idea that they're throwing around at this point is to possibly look at maybe having a condensed season in the spring if we can't have a fall season. Lot of information to throw at you. So to kind of summarize, we're not in a position right now that we can offer some sports due to the guidelines that we have from the Department of Education, which is completely out of our control. You know, there are some folks out there, as you know, and Mr. Hodgkin alluded to it, that are just simply doing what they're going to do with or without masks. Obviously, that doesn't put our kids in a, in a safe spot. There's also other issues. I've talked to Larry from transportation with the extra bus runs. We probably wouldn't be able to leave for anything, you know, further than an hour away until 4:30. So that presents issues too that we would come into. There's, there's all different layers to it. But as far as just reporting out to you from the MPA, again, just to drive home, and I met with my coaches today too, just so that they heard it from me first. You know, those are the regulations that we're expected to follow. It's considered a classroom. In PE, they just released that you have to be 14 feet away. So they expect the same thing from sports if folks aren't wearing a mask. Not great news. But I do want to compliment the MPA. Not just because I, I'm affiliated with them, but they do a really great job advocating for our kids and they're doing everything they can to try to get a season together for them. And I also just want to put a bug out there, you know, if, if they, if we do end up not having a season, we can certainly have some conversations about what to offer our students. Their platform that they're reviewing right now is, is, to use their terms is risk versus risk. Is the risk of catching the virus higher than the mental risk that we're putting our students at? There's a lot of concern that if we pull this, the rug out from the kids right now after working all summer, what's that going to do to their mental health? What does that do while they're in school? And not being able to participate in those activities that would be going on six months. So I, I don't think that it's done yet by any means. I just didn't like what I heard. But, you know, again, just reporting that out to you so you know where we're at. As soon as I get something official from the MPA, which is supposed to be within the week, they'll make a final decision after meeting with all the fall committees. I'll forward that to you, Mr. Hodgkin. Joel, any update on that? Is that anything special or different about middle school? No, I, you know, I honestly would just make the recommendation, the MPA obviously doesn't govern the middle school, but if they were to make that recommendation, I would make the recommendation to this board to also review to see what we could offer. Again, competition, I don't know if, if one group is saying that it's not okay by DOE. I'm assuming we would follow the same regulations there too. And again, I, I would strongly encourage this board to review, looking at, you know, offering something to these students. And I don't know what that is right now, but I'd be more than willing to take that on.
We certainly would look forward to your recommendations about what some of those offerings would be, Mr. Stoneton.
And, and to be very clear too, you know, the, the decision does rest with you folks. Meaning if the MPA comes out and says you guys can play and it's an inherent risk and they don't wear, they're not going to wear masks. If that's something that you are not comfortable with, there is no violation from the MPA if we just give them adequate time to remove ourselves. That's not what I'm advocating for by any means, but it was just very clearly communicated to me that local decision comes first. So again, you know, I certainly would gather what information you needed to be able to make an educated decision. And I will continue to advocate to do what we can for our kids. I'm certainly not, I'd love to see us be able to play, but I understand that there's things in the way too.
Yeah, we'd all like to see all of our kids play. Any, any school committee people have a comment?
I do.
Ms. Shumway.
Thank you, Mr. Stoneton, for the update. I can only imagine how frustrating this all is and having things constantly change. Obviously, all of our teachers and administrators are experiencing something similar. One of, oh, and before I forget, I want to thank all of our coaches that have put together some sort of program this summer as well. They have done an outstanding job. The kids have had something to participate in and, and it might not look like it always did, but they've gone above and beyond. And I know that my son is very appreciative of having that interaction with peers again and getting outside and being active. So they have done a great job with that and keeping everyone safe, following the guidelines. And as far as I know, no one got sick. So that is a great testament. One of the thoughts that I've been bouncing around is, first off, with the transportation issue, we do have a policy in place already that states that parents, as long as they show proof of insurance, can trans students. So I just want to remind everybody of that, that, that we already have that in place. So that could be helpful if we are able to have competitions away from school. If we are not, however, I would really like people to start brainstorming some intramural program. Things like that, some activities that maybe we haven't offered before, but that could be done safely. Obviously, we, we could have a running club because that could be done safely at a distance. I know that there's a, a elementary age like pedal power biking group together kind of locally. So expanding on some of those ideas and having some of activity, social interaction for our students that can be done safely if the sport season isn't able to happen. And then the final thought is, Mr. Stoneton, can you just share with me the reasoning, if there has been discussion, why the MPA hasn't necessarily looked at kind of shaking up what's, what's offered? Because there are certain sports that, that can be done safely. Golf, for instance, cross-country, baseball's been going all sea, all summer and with success and people getting sick. So, so I understand that we have traditional sport seasons. But is there any way that in order for our students to participate in activities now in the fall while our numbers are down, if we could maybe change up the offerings?
I do know, in, in, so I can't speak for them directly, obviously, because I, you know, it's, it's not my place. But from the conversations I've had, they are going to look at having golf still in the fall. They have not talked to any of the tennis committee members. I think, to be honest with you, Kristen, they were just looking at, we were going to get through the four phases. Everybody, everything is going really well and I think that the intent was that we were going to have a season, pushing things back, allowing people to get to school and have some time and get into those things. I think they just expected that we would be able to move forward with the fall season. And you're absolutely right. There's been some events that happened over the summer and people were safe and nobody got sick. But there has been no discussion of flipping spring and fall just because there's still a feeling for baseball, for example, that you still can't keep within three feet at all times. It is a lower risk, there's no question. But again, I think it's, it's really almost an all or nothing and I'm not sure where that's coming from. Except that they've been instructed to tell us as members that we're to follow the Department of Education guidelines. So I was hoping months ago, to be honest with you, that that would happen, that they would just flip it because it is a lower risk. And, and again, it's an inherent risk that you may be choosing to be a part of or not. But it's, it's not heading that direction at this time. So I do like your ideas and I wanted to share with you from that too, that I did meet with the middle school athletic directors today. And there was some conversations about trying to do some virtual competitions. Meaning, for example, how far can you kick your soccer ball, something that simple? And posting the results and doing that as a conference just to try to keep things involved. But a lot of schools are struggling with things. I know I talked with Miranda Cook today. They're only going to be able to do things after school on Wednesdays and Saturdays because of their back-to-school plan, transportation, those types of things. So hopefully we'll be able to regionalize. That's what we were working on before we were told to pump the brakes a little bit. So we'll be closer for parents to help out and possibly do some other things.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody else on the school committee? Hearing from no one. Thank you very much, Mr. Stoneton.
Absolutely.
Hearing about what options we can offer our students.
Absolutely. Thanks for the time.
Yeah, you know, we've talked about the mental health and the exchange for amount of time put in and working for, that our students have already put in some of the added activities and then pulling the rug out from under. But the other piece that, that for sports and main, maintaining their, their, their academic standards so that they can participate is a tremendous motivator for an awful lot of, awful lot of students that may not have that.
Absolutely. We've had between 50 and 70 folks daily. Kids are eager for it. You know, it's not like something that adults are pushing, that kids want it. So I'm hoping something, a miracle will happen.
We all are, yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Delisle, we're looking forward to just hearing a little something from our brand-new technology coordinator about how the technology department is doing. Mr. Delisle.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I mean, we're, we're, we're making do. We're making some progress, trying to get some things straightened out with all of the students. MacBooks, we put place an order to get all of our faculty additional laptops in the classroom. As I said earlier, I'm told that those should ship next week. So we're trying to figure out some problems that those have had in the past and trying to improve that process, trying to put together a tech team in each building between the grade school, middle school, high school, that we can leverage some internal faculty to help us make some documentation and train faculty members in each building for things like Google Suite, Google Meets, Google Classroom, and all of those areas, including Power School as well, to help get some folks acclimated. And then trying to build a knowledge base with helpful articles for all of the staff that they can access on their own at any time.
Thank you. So all of our, your, your intent is for all of our staff members to be able to be totally synchronous as we begin school. Is that an accurate statement?
Correct. And from an IT standpoint, we hope to be able to, and, and from what we've discovered in the past couple of weeks. Um, we hope in I T to be able to manage all of their devices and push out any updates. Um, whether it be, you know, Google updates, Zoom updates, uh, any sort of software updates, be able to manage everything remotely. Whether it be, um, excuse me, students or faculty members. Um, and it looks like from what I've discovered in the past couple of weeks, that wasn't necessarily the case across the board.
Right, right. But but we'll have the hardware in place and then we have to worry about the training, right?
Correct, and we're we're trying to secure, like I said, some more hardware so that all of our faculty members have a second device in their classroom that they can do the remote lesson portion from that device and and have their uh, old secondary device to be able to do anything else as well.
Thank you, other questions from school committee people or or the superintendent, Mr. Hideskin?
Uh, Mr. Delisle, I'm, I don't know what the status is, I didn't ask you today, but uh, in addition to those second um, devices, were there also orders placed or soon to be placed for uh, the request for um, another type of device, whether it's, I I'm not great with the names, but Owl or Swivel or any of those those types of cameras?
I think our agreement was for us to purchase ten of those devices. I've got confirmation from a vendor um, for pricing on those and that they are about eight days out from being fulfilled from placing the order. Um, so we're going to commit to ten of those initially and then, you know, try to get some folks to use them, train them with them. Uh, see, y- you know, if there's more interest in them and then potentially expand based on that. Uh, but not, you know, at this time, purchasing one for every single faculty member.
Right. That was my understanding as well, thank you.
Any other school committee folks? Okay, we're good.
All right, I just have one um, one quick thing. Mr. Delisle, can you just um, let everybody know how this new technology is being funded?
Uh, it's my understanding that majority of this technology funding, and and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but from C R F funding, uh, we're we're looking at exploring, you know, this additional uh, technology because of COVID and being able to uh, offer remote lessons, uh, we're using C R F funding for these devices.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that everyone listening understood that this was a is above and beyond what was budgeted for. And so therefore that we were going to another source in order to to purchase them.
Thank you, any other school committee folks? Okay, I don't see any, there we go. Thank you very much, Mr. Delisle. Now, Mr. Farr, where are you, Mr. Farr? We're looking forward to an update on adult education, please.
Okay, so.
There you are.
Um, I'm going to speak to this, hopefully, there's enough detail in talking as opposed to trying to pull up a slide or anything. Um, so I'll give you some quick updates on adult ed. In in talking with other directors across the state, a lot of us are anticipating increases in our high set and college transitions enrollment. Not, uh, we're a small program, so I don't think we'll be adding a lot of actual classes. We'll just be filling probably the classes we have, so I think we have the capacity to to handle that as we are. The uh, in the wake of COVID, uh, we are, uh, as a hub, we are organized for our grant funds as a hub in Kennebec Valley. And so our hub has um, started the journey of having a new learning management system, so an online platform that is the same as what they use at the community colleges and now the university main system, so Bright Space. And that rollout and expense is all covered by the hub, so it's nothing specific to the winter. Um, but that obviously involves a level of training and development that we're going to be undergoing over the course of the year to make sure our classes are available, online, blended, um, or for use in the classroom even. Um, so that's good news, um, but obviously changes. Uh, the state has come through for us just recently with um, uh, three computers that will be able to be used with some of our students. We have a few students who don't have their own computers. Um, and so they have ordered a number for the seventy plus adult ed programs across the state. So we have those coming in. Um, I don't know if the Jim knows this, but um, we are, there is actually um, a dedicated adult education C R F grant uh, funds that we can apply for, it's a million dollars for the state.
A million, a million?
Million, yeah, it's a million for seventy to eighty program. So um, we're actually only eligible probably for anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars. Eligible for, that doesn't mean we will get it, but we can apply. Um, we have to apply to the state, that's a little different. But that is a little bit of money that we might be able to get, uh, which will help with some of our work. Uh, in conversations with staff and understanding the use of the buildings. Generally, we're not going to be using the schools for enrichment activities outside of our own space in in the grade school. Most of our un-enrichment will be offered online, which means we'll be working with new instructors. We already had a natural attrition to what we were able to offer last year. If you remember, we had last semester, we had about fifty-five to sixty programs. That has went with the need to be able to go online and people not wanting to do maybe in face opportunity i- in person opportunities, we have probably uh, about eighteen classes right now. So it's really kind of uh, put a, put a, a s- uh, the brakes on that. But uh, uh, we will, we are working with new instructors, we've been trying to find some new instructors who are willing to do the online work. If they aren't already doing it in some way already. This means that um, we are not going to be printing a brochure, which is, which is kind of a big deal for an adult ed uh, program. But we will be doing online advertising and we will be doing a mailing. None of the other adult ed programs in our hub, so Waterville, Augusta, Gardner, and Miranda Cook are printing a brochure either. Given that circumstances could change, um, they are moving mostly to the online offerings. Uh, and if you do a brochure and you put all this effort into of anywhere from four thousand to some programs spend eight, nine thousand uh, on a brochure, it could be obsolete, so we won't be doing that. Um, we're going to be encouraging online and phone registrations, mostly as opposed to having people mailing checks or registration forms. Um, we can do a registration over the phone as long as someone has a credit card. If we absolutely need to, we'd obviously register someone with cash. But if they can't register online, then they probably won't be able to take a class online. So some frustration there, but um, uh, I did talk with Jim a little bit about this, enrichment instructors uh, that we have. We've been paying some as as straight up employees and some as um, uh, like contracting with them. They actually all need to be, and this is something I've discovered and learned and and talking with Jim, they all need to be employees. Like, we need to put them through, just as we would end it with all their paperwork appropriately. And that's going to involve a level of work and maybe a little more burden on on uh, human resources folks, but that's kind of an update. And then, so I think those are the updates. I think um, that context is really one of the things, the that update really gives the context for where we a a question I have for you. So I feel like there's a need, right now, the office is opened, kept open about twenty hours a week between myself for two days and um, and our admin assistant, Tekeah Cox, for about the same amount of time. And uh, I think I find it really hard, and I also work as in another district as the director. So I don't have extra time to to put in. So I think need to make a shift in how some of the work gets done because much of what I told you means more, more intakes, more tech support, more um, administrative support work. More assessments, more data entry, uh, a number of things that I feel like um, it's really hard for two of us who are split on, who have each have two days to do. So what I really would like to do is uh, make my administrative assistant full time. At no cost to you. That's.
I didn't hear your last word, you'd like to make your administrative assistant what?
Full time.
Full time.
At no cost to you. That was my last part. So um, I have looked over the budget, I've covered this with Jim, um, and I can do it. I can do it without going over the revenues that adult education is bringing in for the next year. To offset the costs that it would mean to have my administrative assistant full time, which I think would be a huge benefit. Uh, she is highly skilled um, in so many ways. But again, we'll find it hard to uh, be focused on me being two days, her being about two days spread over four to really focus and and do this work to the best, I think, that we could. To offset her costs as a full time administrative assistant, I would need to go down to one day. Um, I would need to, uh, we obviously have no printing and mailing no printing costs and significantly less in mailing costs if we do, because we're not doing a brochure. Um, I can reduce our budgeted instruction hours and still be higher than the hours we had last year. Um, and in those ways, I can fully fund her as a full time admin assistant. The thing that I think is um, important in this is I'm I'm the a direct, the director also in Gardner. So in a lot of ways, uh, the time that I spend at the state meetings, the hub meetings, uh, the required trainings to be a high set administrator, the required trainings to do um, a number of these assessments. Uh, all these things I have to keep up with. I have to keep up with them for my other job too, so, um, and I serve as representation. So you still get my representation and my skill, um, and I think that it would be with Tekeah operating at a increased capacity, more consistent um, a week, I think it could work out really well. So these, this is my my question to you, um, is really to go for forward with that change. To give you the big picture on the budget, the approved budget uh, for adult education was ninety-four thousand ninety dollars. The revenue for adult education between the local share of fifty-five thousand, a state subsidy of twenty, about twenty-six thousand, which was about nine thousand over last year's, which is um, good. Uh, the state and federal grant monies and um, we have about ninety-seven thousand twenty-four dollars in revenue. So the adjustment that I would make would bring our budget to ninety-six thousand eight hundred and six, which is under the revenues that we would that we will generate. Um, I have asked the question, has adult ed ever seen, adult ed is not funded in the same subsidy line the way the school is? It's subsidized, it's paid as reimbursement for our funds two years ago. So I've asked, has that ever been um, curtailed? Um, uh, folks that I've spoken to at the state and other dir- longtime directors do not remember a time that they have seen adult ed curtailed. Now, the budget in the state of Maine for adult ed hasn't changed in about ten years. Um, but the curtailment hasn't happened, so they're not anticipating curtailment. So, are there questions?
I have one.
Ms. Shumway.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Farr, for your your update um, and your flexibility and and still providing programs despite them all needing to be online. One of the things you first mentioned was that there's this anticipation of increases in 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 a population taking classes. And I know that we are a small, a small unit. And then in trying to um, make Tekeah's schedule and salary work full time, you were reducing your instruction hours. So I just want want to um, get a little bit more information on how many hours you would still have available to um, to service and provide um, support for those anticipated increases perhaps.
So we um, based on the budget, I had uh, closer to sixteen hundred hours initially through grant, through the instruction and funding. I would reduce that to about twelve. We, I don't actually anticipate that we'll add more classes. So I don't think it'll be more instruction time that we'll have because we have very small numbers coming in. Um, and we do already do a lot of work with students out on their own. So I think class time actually isn't going to get much bigger. Uh, but that twelve hundred is still bigger than what we budgeted last year, which was around a thousand, so. So I feel like we're still in a good place for that going into, i- if we make this adjustment. Actually, I think it was more, it was eighteen hundred I actually budgeted for this year. So.
Okay. Okay, so and then do you have um, a cap of how many students can be in each class?
So um, if we, in our larger classroom, um, we can safely, uh, and we're in the process of moving furniture out. I think we can safely fit ten students. I would really be surprised if ten students show up at a time. Um, and we often are doing, um, w- we have the same class and we might be arranging two times in a week to do that. So um, we do that already.
Okay, so based on the capacity of students that were enrolled last year, did you ever max out that ten? No, oh, okay. Okay. Thank you for that further information, that makes me feel a little bit more comfortable about making the reduction in hours in order to um, to make this change.
I I think he wishes that he came close to maxing out the classroom last year, but.
I wish, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh, that would make such a difference, but.
I I I have a question, because I don't see anybody else lined up to ask the que- ask a question. I have a question, I I think it's a pretty unfair question to ask of you, Mr. Farr. And and if you can't, that's fine, but in oh eight, when we had our last reduction in in uh, state funding. Um, do you have any idea if adult ed was was given a reduction?
Uh, my understanding it was not, but I I wouldn't, I I don't have firsthand knowledge of that.
I I know you don't, and that's why I said I thought it was an unfair question, but I didn't know if you had heard that during your meetings.
Yeah.
So that's why you feel as though um, adult ed will be under the radar if any of the rest of us have curtailments.
Yes, and and um, and again, I said, when they've done. and again, I said, when they've done curtailments, what I understand is when they've had curtailments in the past, it has not curtailed adult ed funding. So like I said, I think our, I think our, almost ten years, the budget really has stayed pretty much the same at the state level for adult ed. So
For the school committee, Superintendent Hodgkin and Ms. Shumway and I had a discussion about Mr. Farr's request as to whether or not we needed to vote on this change. And we came to the conclusion that we don't think that we need to take a vote. But we wanted Mr. Farr to explain it and see if there was an approval, a consensus of approval for this change in hours. So I'll, I'll just go through the role and see if there is a consensus of support.
Ginny, can I just say one more thing? I said, the other option is, is is if this is, we do this this year and we look at going into next year and find that this is not what you want, there's certainly no reason to, to continue with it.
Okay, thank you. Right. We can be flexible and go back.
Yep.
Or change. Yep. Thank you. Ms. Shumway.
I support this change.
Mr. Petrowski.
Yes.
Ms. Dykett.
I support the change. Thank you for your work.
Ms. Bells.
I also support it.
I support it as well. So five oh, a supportive consensus there, Mr. Farr.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. That was a great report. Appreciate that. Okay, everybody, this is why we have, we're about to launch into what we have eighty-seven participants here to really hear. And so I I have a couple of things to say before we launch into this. As you know, we, as a school committee, ask for your public comment before, to, to inform the school committee before we take a vote. Because this plan is so large, we're going to break it down into parts and pieces and go through the plan, one part and piece at a time. And before and from the school committee, then after we hear the public comment, I'll just get a consensus that we're okay on that piece. And then we'll move on. This is going to be a long process. But I think probably that's the best way to do it because I know that we'll have a lot of questions and a lot of comments if we take the whole thing in its entirety. So for those folks that would like to be represented, have a, have a comment, please type out your comment. And I'm trying to keep track of the comments, plus Mr. Delaw, I imagine, will poke me if I don't see a comment so that I can read that comment in in the, in the public comment section. Okay, I'll get to you here, Mr. Hodgkin, in a second. So I, I hope that I've portrayed that understandably. And Mr. Hodgkins is going to add something more to it. Mr. Hodgkins.
Actually, I'm just, there's a question for you. I thought in our conversation today, you thought we would need to add a vote from the school committee to reopen school. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Is that part of your thinking already or?
Yes. Kristen has the words. So at the end of this, we'll add another motion to the agenda. There will be an agenda change. I, I do suspect, though, that if we can end up voting in the whole long form, that that will take care of that. But I'm not entirely sure. What do you think about that? We can do it either way. Kristen is prepared to do it.
I believe that that is correct. And I, I also wonder if part of that motion and Kristen, I don't know if you already think about this, that you not only vote to open, but you, you vote to open in a particular class, like vote to open as a green designation or yellow designation or red designation.
Do you think that that motion should happen right now before we discuss the long form or wait until we've already discussed the long form?
No, I'm very much in favor of having this discussion first, which is typically, I wouldn't have a discussion. I mean, the typical thing and with most motions is you'd have a motion, then a discussion. But I think this discussion is so lengthy that it makes sense to have the discussion modifications first and then a motion after. So I'm okay with that.
Okay. So then Ms. Shumway, you're, you're all set. Depending on how we come out in the long form, you're all set with that other motion anyway, right?
Sure.
Okay. No, she's all excited. Okay. Okay, so I think, so I, I Superintendent Hodgkins, I think we just crossed lines a little bit. I'm, I'm still going to ask for a motion. Because I don't want to have just a free-for-all discussion. I want to have a motion and then go over the long form piece by piece and then see if, at the end of all of the discussion, if we can then vote on it. You want to weigh in on that, Mr. Superintendent?
I think it's, you know, it's just a, it's a matter of preference and process. And generally speaking, I a hundred percent agree with you.
Okay, thank you. So then, folks, we'll move on to all business, Roman numeral four, A. Instead of the discussion, we'll go right to the motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Winthrop Public Schools educational plan for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year long form.
So moved.
Second.
And now for the discussion, school committee people, if well, all, all people, all of our Zoom people, all of our community folks, I'll draw your attention then to the long form, part one. Is physical health and safety considerations. Number one, symptom screening before coming to school. Is there, first off, is there any public comment about system screening before coming to school that anyone would like to make? So I'm, I'm watching the comment thing here. And if you would like to speak, I think that you let me know in the comments and Mr. Delaw will open your mic. Please unmute or choose the option of raising your hand or comment. Okay. So Mr. Delaw says, please unmute or choose the option to raise your hand and make a comment option. So I'll wait here for people that are slow typists like me. How will this be? Okay, so the, the question is, how will this be enforced? Who would like to take that question?
This is a framework. So it's not an enforcement piece. This is a guidance piece. That's why it's it's listed next. Well, first of all, I should just say that the whole document is the DOE framework. And then what the implications are for, for the Winthrop Public Schools. So there is no enforcement piece throughout this whole document. It's a matter of guidance that what parents should do. And in this case, this is up to telling the parents, both in this document and in other documents that we sent out, what they are, what we'd like to see them do before they send their kids to school.
So I know it's a question out there of our parents. You know, they're, they have a question and I know it's a question that Kristen has gotten also. So I don't mean to take any of your fire away from you, Kristen, but I know some parents are concerned that, you know, their child will get off the bus and they'll say, well, Johnny never wore a mask and I had to wear my mask all the time. What's going to happen? And they're asking that question in the context that depending on the answer to that question, that's how they'll make a decision as to whether or not they want to send their child to school in person or make that remote decision.
So let me, let me pick up on that. So part of that is covered in, in other parts of this, this long form. The expectations in terms of, this is specifically about parents. So I don't know how we hold the parents accountable for doing this, but there are things in here that students are expected to do and required to do. And a very specific statement that says if they don't choose to follow the guidelines, then they can't be considered in person or have to, to change to remote.
And Dr. McConnell writes, the DOE framework states, we will provide clear and accessible directions. I think parents, et cetera, would be more comfortable if we knew how the direction looked and policy for that.
Well, I think the, the directions are there. I mean, I, I don't know what more specificity. You know, the, the steering committee had an opportunity to go through this and we didn't add any additional language. It, right now, we're still talking about just that one part, symptoms.
Yes, just number one.
Coming to school. So I don't, there was, nobody volunteered any additional language for that part. So
Okay, let me just take a quick consensus check on what, first off, are there any more public comments to inform the school committee? From someone's iPhone. So, so many people have sent their kids to school sick in the past. Will they also be checked before entering the school?
So the, the school committee did hear that, that question and somebody brought that up as a possibility. And there were some responses from the steering committee and there was, there was not a decision made to do that type of screening. There was some concern or some statements about the taking temperatures, that that happens in our, in our daycares and such. And that there was a, a general consensus that there were too many students in our buildings to, A, take, take the time to do that and B, to, to record or report those types of, you know, that, that information.
And as I recall, Dr. McConnell also didn't consider the results particularly valid from those digital thermometers that we can afford to purchase.
Correct.
Okay. Oh, and I got from Dr. McConnell correct also. Okay. Okay. Any, anyone else before I go back to the school committee? School committee people, do we have consensus on one? Is there anyone that, that in all, all in good faith cannot support number one?
I have, I have some
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Shumway.
So there have been a, a couple of conversations where we've, where I've asked where out-of-state travel protocols will be stated and would it be appropriate for that to be added to this section? Because I think that the, the question that was asked by the public about enforcement, I think that what, and I understand that this is a framework, but I think that what we also are needing at this point is what is it going to look like? How is that framework going to be turned into actual process for Winthrop itself? So it says that the guidance for families will be provided on our website and that, of course, isn't up yet. But are we intending to use the eight questions that are listed in the July eighteenth, twenty twenty draft framework for returning to classroom instruction that the main Department of Education put out or the main CDC put out? Because I think that that's really important for parents to know that we're, we're expecting that those eight questions, because that includes the have I been out of state in the last fourteen days? If we're going to use this, then I think that we need to state that in our plan. Because I think the more specificity that we have right now is going to reduce some of the anxiety that there might be about about sending their students back, their children to school.
So the I, I think this is part of why Chairperson Gary, you wanted to go through step by step. The language about what to do with students who are, who go out of school, out of state, sorry, during the school year comes up later, but I'll, I'll tell you, it's pretty vague. So I certainly can add. And I, it's not, doesn't matter to me. This is why I want the whole school committee to look at. If you want to see that here and, and make specific reference to those eight questions, then I, I don't see any problem with doing that. I don't mind being, I don't mind being redundant. I do have a problem with, I'm, I'm hearing some people think later on that there's some conflicting information. If we're giving mixed information, that's bad. If we're giving, if we're saying the same thing consistently in multiple sections, that's fine. I do want to also say that one of the reasons, one of the things I was hoping to get out of tonight, and this was a, this came from a conversation earlier with Kristen and Ginny, was that looking to create a document of frequently asked questions because there, God knows, there's been enough of them. And provide some, you know, provide that information, I think, one for the staff and one for the community where there's a lot of overlap between those two documents, but some are very specific. And try to get that up to, to our website ASAP, certainly by the end of the week. And, and, but I, I guess what I'm saying in response, direct response to your question, Kristen, is if we want to specifically address the questions that are in the protocol released by the state earlier, I have no problem with that. It makes perfect sense to me.
Dr. McConnell.
So I just, I really am uncomfortable with this long form where it stands. I do not believe that this long form provides us with enough details, enough depth to keep our community having trust in us. And if we are using the long form the way it stands, I am very uncomfortable that we are prepared. I believe the superintendent has some great ideas. I believe that the administrators are working really, really hard. But I feel like we're missing a loop here. On the DOE website is great stuff. And we can be incorporating it so that every school committee member can see it. So you know how to answer people's questions. We can be putting more stuff together as a committee. So for example, I've been working with the nurses and we have gone through all the different documents the DOE has in terms of what we could send to families to help them to know how to screen their children. Are they all going to do it? No. But at least the community would know what it is we're trying to offer. So I just want to go on record and say, as this document stands, I don't believe this is enough to reassure our community that we are doing the right thing for students and staff in our community. And it doesn't take very long to peruse what's happening across the country and see where they've done things well and where and see where they've done things well and where things have not gone so well. So the DOE, just to answer this one little section, the DOE did just come out with an updated set of guidelines, either last night or this morning. Right in there talks about what the out-of-state guidelines are going to be. And it would be so easy to have that in there so that families know what the expectation is. And families know what their neighbor's expectation is going to be. So that's what I'm asking for. I don't believe that what we have in front of us is really what we need for us to be comfortable as a community.
Thank you. I hope that we can fix it as we go along here a little bit. And I would be interested in your comment after we live through tonight about how this document is shaping up, in your opinion.
Ginny?
Yes, there you go, Ms. Bells.
I was just wondering if, and I think Dr. McConnell could answer this for me. Is there something that would be easily printed? Maybe we could follow up, you know, when we have the school packets that the kids bring home at the beginning of school? Could we put something in that that each family could have in their home? Would that help to, just to have something right at their fingertips? Just a thought.
So I believe not that long ago, I actually sent an email to the steering committee that talked about what I think needs to go out to families now, what I think should go out to families a week before school starts, and what I think should go home with students on the first day if they come in in person, as well as staff. Staff don't really understand what to look for. The whole issue of temperature taking, it's coming out very clear that only 50% of children with COVID have a fever. So that kind of stuff we could do, and it's on the DOE site. We don't not have to recreate the wheel. It's all readable. It's all language that we can use. But yes, I would, and I think that that should be what we should be vetting at this stage. Couple weeks, you know, a month before school's going to start. That's what we should be looking at. And I really, you know, we don't want to overwhelm them, and that's why I think it should go out in stages.
Can we make, Sue, do you think that you can put together a statement that we can make, or Dr. McConnell, for just this one piece that would incorporate the DOE guidelines that you just represented?
Ginny, are you talking about just the eight? The document with the eight pieces on it? The daily home screening for students?
Well, so yes, we're just talking about that document right now.
Okay, so there's a link, and it has, unless, you know, Dr. McConnell, you have a different one, but basically, it's a checklist that could go home. And I was intending to post that. It has the eight areas, and there's a, you know, section one, symptoms. Section two, close contact, potential exposure, that certainly could be made available to, you know, to our parents. If you're just talking about this section.
Yes, I'm just talking about this section, that we need to beef up this section a little bit.
So Ginny, can I just make one general comment?
Yes.
It is about this section, but I think it covers just overall this entire document, that I know that it is not the typical role of the school committee to micromanage in this way. And that trust is typically given to administrators to put in place the protocols and from a policy or a framework that comes from the school committee. In this situation, however, since we are all wading through, you know, uncharted territory, we have no idea about reopening school buildings in the middle of a pandemic. We've never done it before. That I feel like the more information, the more specific it can be, that it will be better off. Because then everyone is starting, because we know that this is going to have to be a flexible document. We know that when students enter into school, that things that we think are going to work might not work, and there's going to need to be some flexibility to change. But if everybody is starting from a very clear understanding of what is going to happen, then I think that it will set our district up for greater success.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Petrowski?
I want to go back to some of the things that have been said here. I'm not sure what the DOE is putting out, but are they suggesting, as I would suggest, that we've also got to think about the mechanics of all of this? And who do you call? We know we're going to have problems, okay, early on. Who do we call? And are there going to be people at the other end of the phone that may be able to answer some of those questions to relieve what's going on? We certainly got that question that if a student comes off the bus, and they seem to have a cold and everything, obviously, we're going to take them apart and perhaps send them to the nurses and also take and talk to the parents. But my point is that some of the small mechanics in this thing really comes down to, what are we going to do if we have a situation? And who do we call?
Mr. Petrowski? I think in order to move forward, that we need, as a school committee, to say, "This section, we would like to see beefed up. And these are the things that we would like to see addressed." And not micromanage how it's done. So we can send this document back to the committee to fill in the spots that we have questions about. That's one option that we have. And in order to allow the committee and the school system to move forward, we have another idea about a motion that we can make at the end of this. But one of our options is to crawl through this document and say what areas need to be better delineated and ask the committee, the committee to take a look at that and make specific adjustments to it and bring it back to us. Can we move in that direction? So what I hear right now is that we need to have a reference to the document that's going to be sent, that's going to be made available to parents, that will be the questions that are asked of our students prior to getting on the bus. The symptom screening, correct?
Correct.
Is there anything else that should be in that square that we think should be added right there? And I would be reminiscent saying that after Dr. McConnell spoke, there were at least four comments that said, "I agree with Dr. McConnell. Well put." Thank you to Dr. McConnell. Thank you, Dr. Jen. "There is so much in this package that much is overlooked before school starts would be best." And then Melissa Brewer sent, "Symptom screening before coming to school," and the main.gov link. So, okay, can we move to number two?
Wait.
Oh, sorry.
So I just want to be clear. Are we looking for more than it being provided on the website? Exactly are we looking for?
I think that's up to the committee. Again, I don't want us micromanaging, but I do want to say where we think, to make all of us feel comfortable, and we're trying to make parents feel comfortable. So we feel as though parents need to have this information in this long-form document. So that we, as school committee people, know that it's going to be done.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Are we okay to move to number two, physical distancing and facilities?
Yes.
And first, okay, so first off, I will ask the public to give us any of their thoughts about this particular item to inform the school committee's votes and discussion. There was one comment while you're all thinking that as far as the checking before you come to school, that it needs to be for students and staff. Okay, number two, physical distancing. Any comments from people out there where our plan may need spiffing up? Ms. Shumway, do you have any notes in the margin?
Oh, absolutely. Okay. So one of this category covers physical distancing and facilities. And I feel like that the facilities portion of Winthrop's plan is not specific enough. But I'm going to take each section one at a time and get to there. So that's just a general comment, but I think that the facilities references in this section needs to be increased.
Okay.
And I'll make some suggestions in a moment. So if we take that first paragraph in this section about students attending school in person and requiring face covers, this section and the next section, which I think covers face covers, the language needs to be very similar, if not exactly the same, because they are seemingly to be contradictory. So what I would like to see in this section is clarifying, this specifically doesn't address mask breaks like in name, but it just says, "While in school, if students are able to be distanced at least six feet apart, they may be permitted to remove their masks." I feel like that it needs to specifically state what a mask break is. How long is a mask break? And who makes the decision that masks are allowed to come off? Because I think that's really important, that everyone is understanding that it does say, and we'll get to this in the next section, but it does say that the expectation is that from the time a student gets on the bus until and enters the school building and until they get off the bus, that they're wearing a face covering. So I feel that there should be a statement in there that says, "Students will be advised or directed by a Winthrop Public School employee when it is safe for them to take, to remove their face covering." Because I don't want any students at any time to feel that they think that they're in compliance and that they can take their mask off. And I think that there is a little anxiety around that in our community. So that's.
So more details around mask breaks?
Correct.
Ms. Bells or Superintendent Hodgkin, are you taking notes on this? Okay, thank you.
And Colleen is too.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Ms. Shumway, next.
Okay, second, oh, is there someone else have a comment?
Can I just, when, I just want to back up for one second. I don't want, I won't believe her this. When we first started this work, mask breaks were definitely a lot more, it was a lot more fluid, like, yeah, kids can have a mask break. Again, it's in the DOE stuff. I can get it for the committee. I can get it. I mean, you can get it. It is very clear, mask break when eating, mask break if outdoors, enable. And it's all right there. So we, again, we don't have to recreate the wheel. And again, I think the community will feel a lot safer if they know that there's these guidelines that are being given to us that we can follow. And then it's not left up to individuals, et cetera.
Okay, so let's get those included in our form here. Agreed.
Can I, can I ask Dr. McConnell a clarifying question?
Yeah, then I have some comments I have to read. Go ahead.
So you mentioned the eating and the outdoors, but I thought that we had said in the subcommittee that it would be okay with their six feet apart, and it was advised by a teacher or a staff person.
Unfortunately, that was how it all started, however many weeks ago. And now it's changed via the DOE. They are guiding us, and I think it's to have consistency. So mass, what the DOE says, "Mass face and coverings may be removed during mealtime and outdoor activities where students and staff can maintain at least six feet of physical distancing." They want kids and staff outdoors if they're going to take their mask off. And that they have ready access to those masks so they can put them back on when needed. And then it goes into a little bit more. So it is definitely much firmer and much more consistent than when we first started this process. So no, it's not a matter of, we used to say, well, if you're in Latin class and there's only, you know, four students and you're all spread throughout the room, you can take your mask off. That is not the case anymore.
So it's all evolved?
Yes.
And we have to keep, we have to catch up with what it has evolved to at this point in time.
Correct.
And this has to be a fluid document that goes through these changes as they come out of DOE or CDC.
Right.
And so what we're doing right now is doing that. We're not doing the work for the committee, but we're just saying this needs to be spiffed up. This needs to go back to the committee. It needs to be more detailed and in compliance. Let me read some comments, if I may. Miss Stover, "I'm going to wait on the AC until we get into the facility part, so don't let me forget." And then Ms. Brewer says, "Agree with Kristen." And Ms. Brewer says, "Thank you, Dr. McConnell, for the clarification." And Ms. Mia Lakas, "I think that your answer, your question, got answered about where for breaks that has to be detailed out." And then, "Thank you, Dr. McConnell. There has been a great deal of community confusion on this issue and as to why our documents had not been more specific and more in line with the DOE." And I don't want to make excuses, but I think things are changing. And we're, we are, up until this point, we haven't had any machinery that allows us to evolve those changes.
There is a question there, I think you may have missed, about face shields versus masks.
Oh, yeah.
Again, there was a short.
We'll get into it in the next section, won't we?
With masks, yeah.
It's what is, people are confused as to what is considered a face covering, though.
Okay, so again, DOE, initially, we said face shields or face masks. Then some studies came out, and I'm expecting a new evolution in the next probably 10 days, which again, is going to be really difficult. But first of all, face shields are not as good as a face mask or a face covering, because you can have respiratory droplets come out from underneath. Therefore, unless you have a healthcare provider, a note from them saying that you are not able to wear a face covering and have to wear a face shield, then you're not going to be able, you're going to have to have a face mask. The issue, the new issue that I'm really worried about may come out in the next 10 days, and I might as well just put it out there. Really good study, just. And I might as well just put it out there. Really good study just came out of Duke University that gaiters, single layer gaiters that people are wearing and bandanas are not so good.
No, they're useless.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
They could actually be worse. The reason, if I yell with a gaiter on, it can actually break the respiratory droplets up, make them smaller, they stay in the air longer. So again, we have not put that in here, but I think at some point it's going to have to be addressed, what kind of face mask. But again, I think the DOE will give us direction on that. And for now, I think we just say no gaiters or bandanas. And no face shields unless you have a physician's note or a doctor or a provider's note.
That sounds good. Let's do that.
That's in the next section though. I just, I mean, and then whatever's staying in the next section should be defined in this one. But the section three talks about face masks and face shields. So I just don't want to get too far past this one section before we start talking about.
Okay, let's remember that little, that bit. What else do you have that coincides with this long form here for physical distancing and facilities?
In the second section that talks about the, the isolation room. I, I don't have any problem with, with the language specifically about the isolation room. I'm asking whether there's a plan that's been created and a protocol that can be followed for when someone who has been in school and has tested positive. I don't necessarily feel like that that plan should be referenced here, but I am wondering if that plan has been developed.
I'm not, I'm not really sure what you're asking. I mean, it's, there, it does say in here that before a student who's been diagnosed can come back, the need, the doctors need to clear them to return.
Right, and that's that one student. But if that student has been in contact, has been in a classroom with other students or has been in contact with other staff, what's the plan and the process for, for that? I'm wondering, I'm wondering if that has been developed.
No, that has not been developed. And, and it needs to be. I'm just going to jump in here. And again, this is what we're seeing.
Having trouble hearing you, Dr. McConnell.
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so that has not been developed yet. We need to work on that contact tracing. That's the bottom line. It is a nightmare in schools. Again, I'm reading about, you know, what's happening in schools where this is happening. Second day of school, second grader test positive, only half the class was wearing masks. How do you contact trace all that? If we do this well, we're going to have cohorts, we're going to have most kids masked, except for these rare occasions. It shouldn't be as hard. I am concerned about staff time doing contact tracing, however. And again, I feel like, you know, you guys are the gurus on this and stuff, but you're right. We don't. The state will help us a little, but they're going to be overwhelmed as well. So, um, the answer is no.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a couple, we do need to come up with a plan for that. I've even read in some schools in some other states that they've just automatically gone red when they have a COVID positive student. And then they let that settle out and then decide if they're going to go back yellow or green again. But that's, that's been their policy. I'm not suggesting that, that, that we do that necessarily, but that at least was a plan. And I think that we need to have a plan. Can I read some comments? Because I don't want any of our folks to say that they weren't properly represented. So there's, okay, so we still need more specific information about masks and face shields. Melissa Brewer writes, exposure is six feet and longer than 15 minutes. So if students are taking their mask off for longer than that, we could have an abundance of self-quarantine. What type of mask? We have to get to that in the next part. If droplets stay in the air, doesn't taking your mask off in the classroom defeat the purpose? Yep. And, and will more than one student be in the isolation area at any one time? Dr. McConnell, can you answer that one, please?
Yeah, that's going to be a struggle, but yes. I mean, the, the answer is yes. The goal, the way, again, I guess there's, again, the health team. We identified what we thought would work well is isolation rooms to get kids into. It's a place where if an adult is going in, because they do need supervision, especially in the younger grades. They're going to need full PPE, meaning masks, face shields, gowns, et cetera. And then, but if we, we're, what we're thinking is partitions. These students will be masked and partitions. The risk is if we have a positive kid, if we have a kid that then gets test positive and we have a kid that was behind the partition in the other cot who tests negative. But if everybody's masked and they're six feet apart, we should be okay. It's just that if the nurse is right there with them, if they're vomiting, coughing, they're the ones that need the PPE. So we need, these isolation rooms need to have well six feet distance and these kids need to be masked.
And are we well on our way to that?
Jim would have to answer that.
Do you have any idea about that, Mr. Hodgkin?
Well, on our way to what?
Having isolation rooms.
Yeah, my understanding is that all, all the schools have identified an isolation room in their buildings. Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Jenkins, I can't tell. You keep flashing on my screen. So maybe your mic is open.
Sorry, I don't know how it did that.
Has a mind of its own sometimes. Thank you. Dan Dumay says, along exposure guidelines, my thought to limiting substitute pools so that they are only serving one community, et cetera. Staff exposure from an outside source and what that then means for all student groups that were in contact with that individual substitute, I guess. And then consider coughs and sneezes while masks are removed as well. For the mask breaks, I guess, is, is the thought. So, Mr. Dumay, if you'll allow me, I'd like to, I'd like to put your question further down the road. But let's not forget it. So substitutes. So right now, I just would like to stay with physical distancing. And, and isolation rooms. Any more comments on those two things?
Do you mean Jenny, just that one paragraph in that?
Yeah, just the physical distancing, number two. And we've gotten down as, well, where, we've gotten down as far as the isolation rooms. Where is that?
Second, the second one.
Yeah.
Because I have more on the third, I think is missing. So I just.
Yeah. So kids that are sent to the isolation room are being tested? I don't think we said that. Will the recommendation be that their parents take them for testing? I don't think we're going to set up a testing site in any of our isolation rooms.
No, no, we will not be doing in-school testing. That would be too challenging. We are going to recommend, well, they're going to need to have a, they're going to need to be cleared by a healthcare provider to come back to school.
However, way they want to do that.
Right.
Okay. Kristen, you're on.
Okay.
Additional things?
Yeah.
You're going on to paragraph three now?
I am. I'm going on to paragraph three. I feel like we have talked about this in further detail. And I feel like that this paragraph should be changed to reflect that. Because they have already been evaluated. And so I just feel like that it should be reflective of what was done and an update per building as to what the air ventilation is, is like.
And what they're doing.
Exactly.
And so now I can read the comment that was the air conditioning comment. And rather, rather than spend some time finding it, the, the question was, are there going to be air conditioners in every room?
Now, the, the answer to that is no. There'll be, we've ordered the air conditioners and the air fans for the, primarily the old wing at the grammar school. The other, all the other schools and all the other places, the middle school and high school have adequate univents and air exchange systems. I will say that Siemens is coming in between now and the opening of school to do a further study. But they believe, they've already done a walkthrough with them of the grammar school. The, we've got approval from the state for air conditioners and window fans for the places that don't have what we would consider proper univents to, to circulate the air. And those have been ordered and actually they're already, the, the fans are already here.
Excellent. Mr. Petrowski or Ms. Dykett, any, any thoughts on number two, that is, physical distancing and facilities?
Nope.
Nope.
I'm fine. And, and Jim answered the question about the ventilation and air conditioning, which is very important.
Thank you.
I have more.
Okay, hang on, I'm going to read another comment or two. Jesse Stover Tyler says, my concern for the isolation room is that possible contamination in a tiny room. One child may just have allergies and another may be truly sick. More than one area should be allocated. Those rooms are stifling hot. How are kids going to learn and stay healthy in that environment?
Well, first of all, I, I don't, I haven't seen all of the rooms that have been designated, but I think they're not the little tiny rooms. The second part of the guidance that we have in here is that we, and this is again, what our plan is, whether it can happen or not, we'll see. But we don't want those kid, those kids to be staying in there for any more than 60 minutes. And we're already struggling to find spaces for, in each building for the isolation room. So, and, and it's not like we have an abundance of additional space. I think what's being suggested is a great suggestion if we had the space to, to make that happen. Perhaps once we have opened and we, we can take a, a look at the spaces based upon actual usage of the spaces, we might be able to identify a second space. But I, but now I think there was a struggle. And actually, I thought, did Jen leave? Doctor, oh, she's right. Dr. McConnell was working with the nurses on identifying those spaces. Do you have any, any further thoughts on that, Jen?
No, I was just emailing them, asking me, asking them where we're at.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you need me to speak at all about isolation rooms? This is Ms. Nurse Melissa at the grade school.
Sure. Go ahead.
So the isolation room for me, and I haven't been in the school over the summer, but, you know, the principal and I have talked about it. It would be across from my office, which is the old wing, right by an exit. And it would adequately, like, there will be at least space for at least two people in there, six feet apart. If there is someone vomiting, I don't, I will not allow another student in there if someone starts vomiting or anything like that. They will be placed with surgical masks, no matter what their temperature is or what have you. We have a great DOE framework screening process. So, and pretty much anyone that has two or more symptoms of the minor, you know, the non, the less common symptoms, if there are two or more, then they will be placed in an isolation room. If there is one serious one, which is like the cough, shortness of breath, fever, new loss of taste and smell, they will be placed in the isolation room with a new surgical mask. So a hospital-grade mask placed on them six feet apart. And, you know, and then we'll be making calls and trying to get them home as soon as possible. And then the process of, you know, like what Dr. Jen said about a, you know, medical provider before they return back to school. As far as contact tracing, that's a work in progress with the DOE and CDC. Public health nursing would be very much involved with us locally. If that answers any questions as far as isolation. I can't speak on behalf of middle school or high school. But Dr. Jen and I and Jeannie Roth have been very much involved in talking about how that will work.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Some more comments. Is cleaning referenced somewhere else? And yes and no. We know that we have to bring that up tonight, so I'm going to hold off on that. Don't let me forget it. I would like to know who will be responsible for cleaning and what type of cleaners will be used. Ms. Merzl, what about ventilation in the older part of the grade school during the winter months? Superintendent Hodgkin, would you like to take that one on a little bit?
Sure.
Mr. Lad?
Okay. No, I'd be happy to. The, uh, when we walked through, we, you know, one of the things that we talked about was air conditioners for the summertime when it's hot. But we also talked about window fans just to move the air in there. And it's, it's, it's possible to look at putting a win, you know, having the window open just slightly. And still be able to move some air with, using the, the fans, not necessarily, it doesn't even have to be blowing in, it could be blowing out. So that we, you know, we can still move the air. And that's, you know, what we would be looking to do at this point. You know, we also know that we may, and somebody else asked that question to me earlier. But right now, that's sort of the, you know, the plan. It may mean that we, we, you know, have that unenviable place of having our, you know, our thermostats a little bit higher, keeping kids away from the window or whatever. But, you know, I think the, the alternative is worse. To not have fresh air in that room is, is far worse.
Thank you. Ms. Ulet writes, this may need to be addressed later. And I agree with you. I think this is something that will have to be addressed later. However, what is the plan for teachers who get sick with COVID or otherwise? Will we need to quarantine for two weeks before returning to work? Who will be with our classes if that is to happen, which is that substitute question? I don't know if you want to address that right now, Superintendent Hodgkin, or if you want to wait on that.
I don't mind answering now, but I think, uh, Ms. Bells has been waiting to weigh in on something. I'm not sure.
Oh, she has?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you had your hand up, Ms. Bells?
I have.
Well, you have to speak right up for me, please, because I don't see everybody on the screen at once. Ms. Bells?
Well, I'm, I'm just concerned about, especially at the beginning of the school year, and it's so hot. And with the kids having to be masked all day. I know my daughter has, is quite worried. She's afraid she's going to pass out from the heat. So what is, what is going on with that?
For dealing with the heat?
Yeah, and being, and, and not getting any mask breaks and being in a mask all day and her being overheated.
You know, I, I don't, and we're only into step two of this. And I, and I, you know, it's, it's, it's sort of ironic. We've, you know, our most recent survey says that 95% or 92% of our, our parents is planning to send the kids back. But I, I think to get the type of detail and answer all the questions that people are going to have is going to be a virtual impossibility. And, and open school. Um, and, and open school in, as Dr. McConnell said, in, in three or four weeks. It's, you know, we don't have a protocol for that now. I, I guess I would say worst case scenario in my mind is if it's too hot. Um, you know, we have, we have, we use snow days. Um, if, if it's too uncomfortable or too hot in the buildings, I think we, we are probably going to have to say uh, it's too hot. Uh, it's unsafe for our students to be in, in school right now, particularly with the expectation that they be masked and we, we, uh, we cancel school, we being me, um, would cancel school for, for that day. That's a, a different thing than's ever happened, but it's certainly within the realm of possibility.
And for everybody, I'm gonna keep on trying to harp at this because we have to get through a very long program. I don't think that tonight is the place for all questions to be asked and answered. But rather it's a time for us to say what other things, what other specifics we would like the kids, when we send this document back to the committee, that we would like to be fleshed out before we see this document again. So I, pardon me? So, so I don't think we can ask and answer all questions tonight. Superintendent.
Yeah, I actually want to get back to Kelsey's question. Um, the, uh, it, it, but.
You're proving me wrong here.
Well, no, just to get back to it, it's to, just to say, you know, and this sort of proves my point. I mean, we have a shortage of substitutes. And it, and also, uh, gentleman earlier, you know, we can, we can address this and I, and I appreciate your approach. Jenny, because I don't have, I don't have an answer for that. And, and the reality is going to be, we don't have answers for, you know, I, I don't know how many questions have come, you know, forward already that, that, you know, I, when we answer 100 questions, there'll be 100 more. So, you know, I, I think I want to just say to the, to the people who are listening. I think the school committee and the steering committee made the best decision to do what we were given as a direction, which was to figure out the safest possible way to open school, provide an opportunity for our kids to come back to school um, at the earliest possible time. And I don't know, the more and more we have this conversation, the more I'm thinking that it's a, it's a, it's an exercise in futility to try and open our schools at all.
I don't, I don't think it's an exercise in futility. I'd like to continue and just point out the areas where we need additional detail and see if we can get this done.
Okay.
Okay. Um, Ms. Shumway, you indicated that you had more things under number two?
Yes. Um, so if you're referencing the, um, the DOE, the main DOE guidelines for reopening, um, our buildings. It talks about the preparation of facilities and it also addresses more areas and physical distancing that are not addressed in our plan. So I'm going to list those out. Um, and I feel like we need to have a plan for, have them be addressed. We don't have a plan for the use of shared spaces, um, specifically lockers. Um, we don't have anything referenced about drop off and pickup and whether that's going to be staggered starts. That's referenced in the DOE, um, guidelines. And we also are missing a facility sanitation plan. That is pretty clearly outlined in the DOE. So again, like Dr. Jen said, we're not needing to recreate anything. It's just take that information, put it on our plan so that everyone knows that this is what we're working from. Um, but we are going to have to come up with a plan for cleaning, um, frequently touched surfaces. We need to have that done in, in an increased fashion. We need, or I mean, at an increased rate, we need to, um, schedule for that increased cleaning. We need to plan for the use of the playground and the equipment. And then have procedures been developed for bathroom use in each building? Because if we are social distancing, then how is using the bathroom? I know that at the grade school, it's a little more planned. At the middle school and high school, you know, you usually ask permission or go in, in free period. So a plan needs to be developed. I'm making the assumption that one has not yet. And then a plan for cleaning the bathroom throughout the day, which does not happen right now. Um, so those are all things that I think need to be addressed in this facilities category.
Jenny, can I add something or?
Go ahead, Ms. Dykett.
I, I know, because being on the other end of this in my school too, some of these discussions have come up and we've asked a lot of questions around the bathrooms too. And I know one of the things, and I'm assuming Winthrop has this too, that every room will be equipped with sanitizer. And one of the expectations will be every time the students enter that room, that they sanitize their hands, even if they just went to the bathroom and washed their hands for 20 minutes. When they enter that room, they will sanitize. So hopefully trying to keep that space. And again, if they're moving around more, we're looking at doing pods. So the kids are staying in one room and we're moving. Um, so that alleviated a little bit of my stress with that as well. If you maintain the expectation that when, when you enter a classroom, that you will sanitize coming in.
Thank you.
Can I, can I say something?
Yes.
So in, in regards to all these plans, I, I think it was my understanding that they might be different per building. Um, and that that would be the administrator's job and maybe be, would be communicated that way? Because the populations are so different, the number of bus students are so different. Is that, are, are we gonna have all those different plans in this document? Is that, is that what our goal is? I'm just, I'm just wondering.
I, you know, I'm from the outside, as far as your committee goes, looking in. But I, I would say that you would stipulate that those plans need to exist. And those, those principles, if that's what you all decide, need to have those plans. And you as a committee need to see those plans. But I don't think that we could add all of those plans to this document. But you can say they do need to exist and you need to see them.
So I guess I just wanted to clarify, because I am on that committee, to Kristin, are you just looking for a statement that says these plans are in place? Or are you looking for the actual plans?
Um, if there is a reference to the plan, then that would be sufficient for me because again, it's just the specifics of that we need to have a plan in place for this. And then the community and the parents that are sending their students will have the affirmation that this plan exists and that these are the steps that are being taken. So that I can send, and these are under the conditions that I'm understanding that my child's going to school. So it doesn't need to be the specifics listed in this document, but I feel like it, it needs to be referenced in the document specifically.
So just that there is a plan, and if you have a question, refer to the website, refer to the principal, is that what?
Refer to the principals, yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Comment here from Jesse Stover Tyler. Is there a doctor the school has contracted to give the go ahead to return to school if a student had displayed symptoms? Are parents expected to incur that expense each time a student displays one or more of the numerous symptoms? No, the school system has not employed a physician that would be in charge of that kind of thing. Every school system does however, have a physician who is Dr. McConnell for Winthrop Schools, who guides, uh, our system and guides our nurses during a regular, uh, non-COVID year. But we have not contracted with her to give COVID tests, nor do I think we're going to. With so many unanswered questions, how are students, how are parents supposed to make the decision by Friday whether to send their children or not? Superintendent Hodgkins, would you like to address that question? I think you have sort of, but want to reiterate?
Yep. I, I think it's, you know, they, we, we're putting up as much information as we possibly can. And, uh, parents, this, this, this question is a great question and it, it kind of baffles me in that, uh, the survey basically indicates, you know, and you're right, there's two days left, but I mean, right now 90 something percent of our parents are saying they're sending their kid back by not saying they're keeping them home. They're saying they're sending them back. Um, but it's ironically, all the conversations I have are people who are really questioning whether or not they, they think it's safe to send them back. So, you know, I don't have any specific guidance except to say that, you know, for me, um, I would err on the side of caution. And if I don't feel that my, my child can stay safe at school, then they'll have to make that choice. The only thing I would ask, the probably shameless way to do this is, I really would, would encourage parents to consider the remote option as opposed to homeschooling. Um, and I'm not gonna talk about that now because it doesn't fit here, but, you know, it's, it's a, there's not a great answer for that.
And then Deidre Chang says, there are a great deal of unanswered questions and it's challenging to feel remotely well-equipped to make a decision for our kids by Friday. Can that deadline be changed?
Um, I, I guess for me, the answer is, I mean, yes, it's not a hard and fast deadlines. We could certainly look at changing that. The problem is, um, and you're, all the administrators are on, are on the Zoom at some point, but you know, there's a great deal of planning that they need to do. And so they need to have as much information, uh, as possible in terms of who's gonna be in person and who's gonna be remote. So, you know, I, I would say that our hope is to get as many, as much information back by Friday as possible. And I would, I would say that you might want to, if you're not sure, you're not comfortable, you don't think the answers are there, then, uh, then make the decision to do remote. And then, uh, with them, we'll, then, you know, we'll see what other answers can be provided. And then with a five day notice, um, they can make the decision, send their children back to school full time.
I just have to say to everybody, we do not have all of the answers. The situation is made more frustrating and perplexing for everyone because we learn more about the, about COVID every day and suggestions change weekly. We're, we're not gonna know all of your answers and that frustrates us and frustrates you. I know, but we're going to have to go with what we think that we know. And be ready to evaluate as new information comes through. For our parents, you can only make your decisions, as the superintendent says, based on uh, the best things you've been able to learn. And, you know, if you need to err on the side of, uh, of being conservative and take the remote option. Uh, we have a parent, Heather Wilcox, that says, what is the remote option? And it's just that, that we hope that we have the equipment in place. You, if you were at the beginning of the meeting, you probably heard from our technology coordinator that we hope to have all of the equipment in place and we hope to have our teachers trained so that they feel comfortable, um, giving education remotely. And, and more likely than not synchronously. So, um, and Melissa Brewer says, the doctor offices are ready for an abundance of phone calls. They may triage on the, on the phone if you have a student that is showing some symptoms. The remote option that superintendent said will, will not to expect the same level of a, no. Uh, we've made that really clear a number of times. I think that a remote option is never going to have the quality that in-person is going to have. But we're going to try to offer it and do as good a job as we can. Ash, Ashley Arsenal says, what will happen if we have a positive case for the schools? Um, we've, we've already discussed that and that needs to be decided and put into the, the document that we're working with tonight. It has been over five months that this, that the school should be 100% ready for virtual instruction. Well, thank you for your opinion and we're working toward that. Samantha says, it would be helpful if more information was provided for what the remote learning will look like. It would help to make our decision. Is there, uh, Superintendent Hodgkin, is there any more you want to add to what I said to, about the remote possibility for education?
Yeah. First of all, I want to address the, the notion that it's been five months. Uh, the landscape has changed virtually every day um, over that time. So I, I don't think that's a fair statement. But more importantly, the remote, what we're looking at as remote is, is more, um, robust. You know, last year when the, um, the, the teachers had to go to remote without any preparation or training. There were a number of tools that were not available, while it was available to them, but they had had no training on, not able to use. Our intent by, by getting more, um, machines and, and technology for the, for the staff is so that they, um, can do a more robust, experience, provide a more robust experience for the, uh, for the remote learners. Um, they'll have devices provided by the school at home. And work that the teachers may provide, um, that they can work on at home and instruction um, that will either be done, um, in, in, in person, in, in live, you know, like live streaming, or if the teachers opt to do instructions separately, then they can do that. It won't be live streamed because I know there's some concerns around that. Uh, but it, it definitely will be, um, you know, more specific training. I mean, not training, more specific instruction, uh, for all of our students regardless of whether it's a kindergartner or 12th grader. Um, you know, more purposeful, a more planned out, more robust than it was in the spring when, when we were just thrust into it uh, without any training.
Will remote learning children be expected to complete the same curriculum as in, as the, uh, in-person students?
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay, we, we're gonna have to continue to go along this document. I, I think we have number two done. Is that an accurate statement, uh, with school board members?
Yes.
Can I just ask before we move off of that? I'm looking to move on, right? But I, um, I just, there was a lot, um, that Kristin, you shared at the end that honestly I didn't get. Uh, I just need to know if Sue or Colleen were able to get that so we can make sure we, we respond to it appropriately.
I can drop off my notes too.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
That would be great.
I'll plan to do that. Um, and then just a one quick comment about remote. There's a section of, that kind of addresses the remote learning in this. So if we could just kind of get there for all of the, on the Zoom, that might be, um, helpful in us moving along and addressing all the concerns at one time.
Thank you. Okay. Masks, number three. We're still in section one. Number three uh, is about masks and face coverings. Kristin, do you want to start us off with your thoughts about additions that we should, that we should ask the committee to make?
Sure. Um, in paragraph one, I was okay with that language. Paragraph two, I think we had addressed that before about defining what the, clearly defining. And I, I feel like I have the old DOE, um, recommendation. So have that be updated to what was published yesterday. Um, and, and so all of the specifics about what a mask break is. And then paragraph three, I was okay with that. The face shield, as long as our, our, um, plan, where it says the, the framework for face shields, it's in the, the previous column, as long as that's up to date.
Right. I think that last paragraph is no longer accurate.
So this, so that area might be, the framework might need to be updated.
Well, with medical doc, yeah, okay. And the types of face shields that are acceptable.
Right. So the face shield framework. Right. So the face shield framework is referenced in the previous column. And if that is not what the current um, DOE guidelines are, then let's update that. I don't know for sure if it is. And then, um, in paragraph four, um,
Of section three? I only see three paragraphs.
Yeah, me too.
I have four. Students and staff may be permitted to choose a face shield. Has that been removed? That's, has, that's still in my copy.
No, it's still there.
Okay. So, um, students and staff having the required documentation, there was a question by a parent, if an IEP was sufficient documentation, or do they need to have, um, a note from a doctor to wear a face shield?
Uh, I believe they, that, actually I'd be interested in hearing what Dr. McConnell has to say about that, but my, my guess would be that if it's, if an IEP makes a determination, actually, um, Mrs. Fawcett is on this call too, but I think if an IEP determines a alternative face shield, that that would be, if she is, that that would be adequate.
Yeah. I, I would, I would say an IEP, if, if it's going to the length of being in an IEP, that's very appropriate. If it's a, uh, typically developing kiddo, um, that, you know, for whatever reason, um, needs, they think they need a face shield, then I think it needs to be a, a healthcare provider, no.
Mrs. Fawcett, do you want to weigh in?
The special team will, will be looking for guidance from our medical professionals to make those decisions for the most part, um, from our DOE calls that we have on a regular basis. Um, and I, I'm going to say this and it's not something I typically would say. Our state director has shared the term, a pandemic trumps a disability, which I don't like. Um, but the purpose that she said that was around students that can't wear face coverings at all. So face shields or face masks. Um, they are saying that it has to be something. So I,
Is it fair to say, or then it would be remote learning? Yep.
Yeah. We would be doing remote learning, but we would also be working, um, to develop desensitization plans so that, um, we can work on getting students wearing either, or tolerating either the face shield or face mask.
Thank you. Okay. Um, anything else on number three from any of the other school committee people? Um, Ms. Shumway, does that get through all of your margin notes?
It does.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to four, hand hygiene?
Uh, were you not going to check with the public on this one?
Didn't I already check with the public on masks? No. Oh, you mean on hand hygiene?
No, I meant on, on masks. Maybe I missed it. You might have.
Um, I, I might not have said the words, but they've, uh, more mask questions from the public, please, or, um, I told, I already said a thing about not too many more questions, but where you think we need to spiff up our?
I, I have a question.
Our definite Sue.
Melissa.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, that's okay. Um, this is, yeah, Nurse Melissa. Um, so I have a que, which I've gotten a lot of questions from the, you know, the community and being a community member myself. Um, you know, the question I have is obviously we've gotten, um, some PPE from the DOE and what have you, but a lot of people have asked, like, how, how much do we have, like, are we going to provide masks for these students? Are we, are we going to, you know, obviously if they're soiled or dirty or they sneeze and then we'll replace them, of course, the teachers and, or myself. Um, and that's a given, obviously, but, you know, I think, I mean, we have a, we have all, an abundance of PPE for sure. I, I know that personally. But I, I think, I think a lot of, um, community members are asking like for guidance on, you know, are we going to provide, are we expecting them to have like, you know, an extra set in their bag? And I don't know if this has been a talk, uh, you know, and, and, you know, I've have my own insight and with Dr. Jen and, and Jeannie, the middle school, high school nurse, but just curious what thoughts have been talked about.
So, you want me to take that?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, um, did the, uh, the answer is not quite as black and white as you might think. The, we have purchased an abundance of PPE. There's some things, and I know that you and, and Dr. McConnell have been working on things that are sort of specific, the, uh, um, N95s, for instance, and the, and the gloves and stuff and, but in terms of the stuff that the, you know, the, the general population, uh, we have thousands of, uh, replacement masks, but what we're really encouraging, I think it's somewhere, maybe it's not in here.
I know. That's why I was wondering.
It, it might be in our other, our other guidance to, to suggest that people, um, should consider, uh, purchasing masks for their, for their own children. Um, and, and we're prepared to provide them if that doesn't happen. Um, I think we're recommending that people buy multiple masks and that they, you know, they keep them clean or rotate them through. Um, we are prepared with, with, um, masks, um, if we, uh, if, if, if a person isn't able to provide them themselves.
Okay. And that's what I encourage. And I say, you know, try so many, you know, there's so many out there that try ones that your kiddo likes, right? I mean, that, you know, I think that I just wanted to make sure that I'm, I'm properly answering that correctly when, when people have asked me specifically. So.
Is it addressed in number five?
Yeah, yeah. Marshall Lasky just wrote in that it's addressed in number five also, and I knew I had read it. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any more having to do with masks and face coverings? Uh, my question is to the public now before we move on to hand hygiene.
There's a question in the comments.
Um, can masks be homemade or do they need to be surgical?
They don't have to be surgical. Um, perhaps, uh, Dr. McConnell can, there, there is, there are some standards. Um, and I, I'm not exactly sure what they are, but, uh, you know, I, I know that I've seen a number of homemade ones that are pretty awesome, uh, but I don't know what the standard is. Jen, do you?
Well, no, I think that came up a little bit before when we said that we have to, we're going to send this back and that's going to be one of the questions to the committee is to detail that out. What is an acceptable mask? For example, those neck things that are synthetic are, um, actually worse than wearing a mask at all.
I did have my, I did have that in my notes. I did have that in my notes.
So, yeah, I, I think that's, um, um, can masks be, okay, I read that. All right. So moving on to hand hygiene and what I should have done with masks is ask the public for their comments to help inform any of the thinking of the school committee folks. So, um, public, please write in your comments now about hand hygiene. How available, Superintendent Hodgkin, while we're waiting for some of those comments, how available are the, these long forms to other people that are calling in? Can they see these long forms so that they know what is on here?
It is posted on the, uh, on the district's website.
Yep. So folks, if you have any question about the form that we're going over right now, please take a look at the form that's posted on the website. You can work right along with us. Um, so I don't see any hint and I just wanted to tell, uh, Kelly Hooper, I'm not ignoring your remote question, but I thought that we could take it up, uh, at a, at a, at a different place. So I'm not ignoring that. Uh, will there be guidelines on washing and reusing sanitizing uh, reusable masks? And I'm hoping that that will be added, uh, with the type of masks that we could use. And I know that we have it in here, um, suggesting that we have several masks, just as the superintendent said, and that they be washed. I thought I had read daily, but I'm not sure on that.
It's in the next, it's in the next section.
Okay. So anything on hand hygiene? Uh, Ms. Shumway, do you have notes in your margins?
No, I was, um, okay with what we stated. I just had, um, mentioned to Mr. Hodgkin on our meeting on Thursday that if there was a technique that, um, I know that it says that our staff is going to be trained with that and that it's expected that they would pass that along, that it would be helpful if our parents receive that in that ahead-of-time packet, especially our younger students. Parents could begin practicing that so that it's not completely new information. Um, that was my only suggestion on that section.
Um, other school committee members, thoughts, concerns, additions that you think should be added to the document? Okay. Wow. We can now move to number five, personal protective equipment. Uh, so with the public, would you please, after reading that section, would you please, um, give us your suggestions for additions or details that should be added to our policy? Um, and while we're thinking about that, oh, 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 Ms. Mia Lockett says, uh, will there be guidance on washing and reusing sanitizing reusable masks? And yes, we've asked for that all to be detailed in our plan. And from this Brewer, Nurse Melissa, CDC, I don't know what those letters are necessarily telling us. And anyway, CDC has great guidance along with the DOE. Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Um, I don't see anything else coming up here. Again, Ms. Shumway, do you want to kick us off with what you have written in your margins?
Sure. Um, first paragraph, it says that, um, where is it? It says that they, we encourage staff and students to provide their own face mask or face covering that meets the guidelines. I feel like there should either be a link to those guidelines or those guidelines should be spelled out. Um, or the guideline should be sent home now so that parents, um, it's very clear what they should be purchasing or making. So that's in that paragraph. And then in the second paragraph, I was, um, I was fine with the language there.
Other school committee members, anything of concern, any additions that you want to make? Or details that you want the committee to provide for number five, personal protective equipment? Seeing none, are we okay with that then? We're going to move on. Return to school after illness, a question that's been raised a couple of times. Um, public, after reading this section of our long form, would you please make comments or request for additional guidance?
So is this a, um, while they're doing that, uh, per person guy, which this, I think this would be a place where uh, there was a question earlier about whether, you know, if we have a, I think you answered it partially, but I just want to come back to it.
Yeah, sure.
We're not going to incur the costs as a school. If, if, you know, I think this is air on the side of caution type of thing. If somebody has, uh, symptoms of COVID-19, um, we're not going to send them all to Dr. Jen. She's probably happy. But no, it will, will then become a responsibility of those parents to, uh, take them to the provider and the school is not going to incur those costs. That will be up to the, uh, the parents. But I liked, um, I, I think Nurse Melissa mentioned earlier, my guess is going to be they call, I think the, the doctors often be prepared to do some, um, some questions on the phone and some triage about whether or not uh, they can, they can handle it. I hate to say it remotely. They can handle it on the phone. Or they can, or they're going to need to see them to clear them to come back to school.
Yep. Thank you. What about, uh, and then Dan Dumay posted the link, I think it was to that, our long form.
Yep.
And then, uh, Ms. Wilcox says, oh, what about other members in the household that travel out of state?
Yeah, I think, I, I, it's been pointed out a couple of times. I think we're going to need to, um, beef up our guidelines around out-of-state travel and return to school. Um, I, I, again, as Dr. McConnell has pointed out several times, there is, um, there, we don't need to reinvent the wheel here. I think it's, it's there. We just need to, um, to put in place. But I want to make this statement at, at this time because I, I, we've said that a lot. And I think there may be some people who are listening to this who think that, uh, we've been remiss and, and not having done all this stuff. But I think, uh, Dr. McConnell can be the first to, to say that the, the guidance changes pretty frequently. And so it's, it's, um, it's really, really hard to, um, be a hundred percent on top of everything all the time. And I think the committee, um, the steering committee has done a, uh, an admirable job in my mind of trying to get the most current information in, um, in some sort of form for us. And that's what you guys are doing tonight. You know, we, we put together a draft, um, using the best information available. And I don't know how many times already that the information has changed since it was in the draft. Um, so I think people just need to understand that and, and, and know that the people who are putting this together are doing um, absolutely the best job that they can.
Yeah, we, you know, I agree with that and they've worked countless hours to do that. We appreciate that. But now we're, we're trying to have the community help us out with this.
I will just add what I, what I'm seeing here in some of the comments and,
Hard to hear you. Sorry. There we go.
Is that better? Sorry.
Yep.
So, um, I don't know. Oh, um, so we've seen a couple of times, fourteen days, that kind of stuff. So we're, we will try to come up, the, the health staff and I, the, the nurses, um, with some guidelines. I think, you know, I think some of this is also going to be common sense and talking to the school. But, you know, if your kid wakes up with a little bit of a runny nose and the next day they're absolutely fine, uh, you can't keep them home for fourteen days. I don't think you should be taking them in to, you know, get a, a COVID test or whatever, but, um, if they've had a fever of a hundred and two and a cough and they felt achy and they've been out five days, I think we're going to ask you to get them cleared. And I see, you know, the question about not having health insurance. Um, that, that is an issue, but express care, um, is, is able to distribute tests. The other thing is, is we're getting tests back quicker in terms of the travel. But some of this is common sense. Some of this is changing. If you're, if you're diagnosed with COVID, you can actually sometimes come out of quarantine faster than if you've only been exposed to COVID. This is not the place to get into the details, but we are going to try to help give the community guidance on that. But it may very well change over time. Um, but you guys are asking great questions and you have every reason to be anxious and uncertain about this, but we'll do what we can to keep your kids safe.
Thank you, Dr. McConnell. I al, I also think that we have to have a plan in place for the plan to evolve the plan. You know, when does the committee need to meet again? Or do you just say you're going to continue to meet every week or every other week for the rest of the semester and see how this plays out and evaluate that timing from then on? But whatever that plan is, I think we have to make sure that we have a plan in place to evolve the plan. Does that make sense?
It does. And, and I, I guess I want to take this opportunity. I've already sent this out to the members of the committee. This committee has worked really, really hard. Um, I apparently completely misread the, uh, the, the decision. I, we didn't meet this week because I thought we were going to look for some guidance. we were going to look for some guidance from the school committee. That clearly was not the wish of the committee and so, we will continue to meet. And I just feel they've worked exceptionally hard since the middle of June. I felt we were at a point where we had a plan to bring to you guys and so, but by not meeting today, I certainly heard from all of the members of the committee that I probably need to get my hearing checked because I, because I did not, what I thought was a decision of the committee was not, was not the decision of the committee. So, we will reconvene, we will continue that process. I think that's what we had hoped to do and I think we'll have far more direction at this point. Can I answer one of the questions that's up there, Jenny? Even though it's not--
Sure, I was about to take a break and read these. Do you want to address Ms. Stovers?
Yeah, I do. All I, we do have a, if you look through the whole, there is a plan for us to go to yellow. I think the school committee has made the decision to enter into this with a, what I call a modified green plan. It's not really a green plan, only in that school is open to in-person to 100% of our students. What percentage of students actually turn up, we'll see. And, you know, so, there is a, there is already for purposes of scheduling and other things that we've talked about, the administrators, there is already cohorts that have been divided. We're not using them at this point because the committee has chosen to go with green. But we are prepared to do exactly what she's suggesting here if the decision isn't made to go to a yellow. And that's what, those children are going to continue to play around if we end up going to a yellow model. So, we are, I'm not suggesting that we are using the geographic location as the cohort model, but a cohort model which will allow consistent students in school. But I'd want people to know that if we go to a yellow model, it's unlikely that they will be attending four days a week.
Thank you. Ms. Will Cox, does the student need to stay home for 14 days? I think Dr. McConnell tried to answer that. From Ms. Anazuski, thank you to all who have put in so much time on this committee. Battling COVID feels like a moving target. Your work is appreciated. Thank you. To the committee for all of that. Again, not all families have, yeah, we addressed that. We don't know an answer to that.
Well, I have an answer to that. It won't be very popular, but there's an expectation. I know that's true. That statement is absolutely true. But we have to operate under the assumption that everybody is supposed to have insurance.
Okay. I would just like to say privately, oh, am I supposed to read that out loud then?
Not if it's to you.
Is, so I'm supposed to, okay. Hang on, I have to read this privately. Okay. Okay, I think that we will, Ashley Arsenal, I think that we will be addressing that a little bit later. Nurse Brewer writes, student does not need to be quarantined if the parents, if the parent tests negative. That could change, but right now, the guidelines are if adults test negative, child can return. And then, correct, however, why dividing alphabetically if going to yellow? Do you want to say anything more to that superintendent?
Yeah, for us, the consideration was more about making sure the cohorts are consistent. And it's, the committee may decide to direct us to do it geographically. But when we met with Larry Allen from Northeast Florida was on the committee and we just had suggested that it be done alphabetically with consideration given to not dividing families. So, for instance, if a family has two different last names, one's A and one's Z, that we don't put them in separate cohorts, we keep them together. The consideration really was more about making sure the cohorts are consistent.
I don't know if you want to take on Thea Bridges' question right now, Superintendent Hodgkin, or does that belong in a different place? I don't think it's anything to do with our plan right now. It's more of a personnel question.
Yep, yeah, I would say it doesn't belong here.
So, Ms. Bridges, I think you need to address that question to superintendent individually. We're going to stick with our plan here and try to stick with it. Why are families supposed to have insurance?
Maybe I used the wrong word and say supposed to, but I mean, if you, anybody who's filing their taxes, you're supposed to show proof of insurance. There's an expectation, maybe it's not, it's not an absolute given. But if you don't have insurance, then there are penalties for that and the expectation is that everybody is supposed to have insurance. Now, do they? Obviously not. But I don't think the schools can take on that responsibility for people who are not insured.
Thank you. Ms. Anazuski, I think there is a money available through the CARES Act to families who need help paying for testing. People who are uninsured or don't have a regular care provider should call a local healthcare center or hospital-based urgent care center or primary care hospital-based practice that is free to the client. Maine.gov document, check online. So, there's perhaps some help.
Dr. McConnell mentioned something like that earlier and that's what I would say as well.
Thank you, Ms. Anazuski. Ms. Garette, if a student is sent home and cannot return until cleared by a doctor due to COVID concerns, is there an expectation that the siblings in the house or household members stay home until this clearance occurs?
Again, I think we would look at that on a case-by-case basis, not necessarily. But I don't know.
And then she said, oh, okay, that's from Ms. Anazuski. Got it. Ms. Anazuski says that she's sure that Dr. McConnell has information about the CARES Act money that might be available through primary care facilities for folks that are without insurance. You no longer have to prove insurance. It is no longer a law. Okay. There is public health help out there. I will work on getting that information out to the public. I, as in we, the healthcare team. Okay, thank you. Those people will certainly appreciate that effort, Ms. Brewer. All right, let's see, where are we? We're return to school after illness. Ms. Shumway, do you have additional items?
So, I think that the consensus is that it would be helpful if parents had guidelines that, that specific, that they can refer to, almost like a reference card. You know, so your student has failed our symptom check back in the first section and now, it's like, almost like a flip chart. Next, what do I do now in order for, they're not going to school today? What do I do now, the steps in order for them to return to school? I think, I think that that would be really helpful if our parents had that. And then, the, what's written here, it says that a final decision as to whether or not a doctor's note is required to return to school will be made by the building administration on a case-by-case basis. What standard is being used? Or I guess I should say, is there a standard that the administrators are being given to use to make this determination? And I, Mr. Hodgkin, I just would want to make sure that our administrators are comfortable and with that being put on their shoulders if they feel like that they can make that determination rather than just following a standard protocol. So, that's, those are my comments for that section.
Do I respond to that or you just want us to clarify that? Because I can tell you that administrators are not comfortable with that. But really was, the question was, you know, if, if, you know, somebody wants to say, I don't, I don't think they should have to go to the doctor and, you know, and I'm sending my kid back anyway. The whole discussion there was around, you don't get to make that decision. You know, we think you need to do that.
Okay, then I think the language might need to be clarified in that section because it sounds like the building administrator is making the final decision about if they can return to school or not. And so, I think we just, it just needs some, maybe some clarification that, because I was a little confused as to what the meaning was.
Yep.
Thank you.
And on that note, I just wanted to say that the DOE and the CDC have specific guidelines coming out more so and all the pediatricians and doctors will be getting from the AAP, the American Pediatric, that they use. And it's very, very specific on if the parent does refuse a test, like if we send them home, they follow the criteria to send them home and the parents refuse a test on, you know, what the criteria to come back to school. So, it's very specific and I think like Dr. Jen said, don't reinvent the wheel and just use those guidelines that have already been written out for us and those will be public and we will get those out to everyone. You know, as far as obviously prior approval from, you know, the superintendent and you, everyone involved in this whole process. But we are meeting tomorrow, the health team and I, you know, Dr. Jen and Jeannie and I. And we will be, and we've been endlessly working on those guidelines too, for the public.
Yeah, I just want to add, and I'm glad that you're all on this call because what we didn't want to do there was have this fall more, and we're happy to do that if that's what the health team decides. But we didn't really want to add this burden onto the nurses.
Right. Right, and I do appreciate that, but I think ultimately they will, they will ask us for guidelines, which we expect anyway, right? I mean, that's what we're here for and we do have the, you know, we expect that and Dr. Jen has been amazing with being a resource as well and consulting with her as well. So, but I think if we have that, you know, it's pretty, it's very user-friendly and easy for any layperson to look at and be like, okay, well, I have these symptoms. You know, we all, you know, go by those guidelines and then, you know, and follow what the expertise have, if that makes sense.
It does. We just didn't want the public, as a, in general, to be strong-arming our nurses to get the kids back to school.
I appreciate that. We'll forward them to you, superintendent.
I have a question in regards to those guidelines that Nurse Melissa was talking about. Well, is that available for anybody to go look up if I wanted to see those?
Yes, yep, and I, and Jen, you know, Dr. Jen or we can definitely share easy links. I have been, basically since the school has closed all summer, we, I've had weekly Zooms with the Department of Education Nurse Consultant Emily Poland and she emails us all up-to-date things, like the DOE framework that just came out, you know, the updates that just came out on today and yesterday. So, it's very, I'm constantly getting updated. But yes, they are public knowledge. In a moment, I can share on the chat as well. Same with the screening tool that we're, we've been talking about. It's part of the DOE and a framework, really, and it's in there. Actually, I think Megan White just did that. So, that's the screening tool and I'll look at that. But yeah, it is all very, it is all public. This is not, you know, a secret to anyone and it sounds like most main schools are utilizing this framework. I mean, you know, it is very user-friendly.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
School committee people and Superintendent Hodgkins, I propose an eight-minute break. Some of us have been meeting since 5:00 and it's time for a break. How about we meet back here at 9:30? I have 9:22 right now. And then, the school committee has to be prepared. I think we have a policy on the books that says that we have to vote if we want to extend the meeting past 10:00. I think it's important that we get this thing done. I'd like to extend that committing, that meeting past 10:00 and get this done and back to the committee so that they can work on it. And if need be, schedule another meeting next week if that's possible. So, I just throw those thoughts out there. And is everybody okay? The school committee people and superintendent okay with taking what is now a seven-minute break?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody's okay with that? I don't hear anything. Okay.
Is there an expectation that we log out and then we log back in or we just?
I'm just going to drop my screen so that people don't see my shoes that I'm wearing tonight.
Okay.
That's all I'm going to do. So, I, okay. See you at 9:30. Okay? Okay, Superintendent Hodgkins?
Yes.
Here we go. Here we go. How you doing there Superintendent Hodgkin? How many hours have you been on screen today?
A lot, a lot.
Thank heavens we have this capability though, huh?
Yeah, well, I should just, because everybody, everybody's out there, you know, knew, and I don't mind saying that I, you know, I was out of state. And so we're following our protocol for, for keeping everybody safe by not having an in-person meeting tonight, which I, I think probably feels paradoxical to some people. But just FYI, seems where people know that, I did get my negative COVID test results this afternoon, so.
Yay!
That's why I'm not wearing a mask. Before I actually, I wore a mask all day until I, you know, I heard for sure, so.
Yep, excellent.
I appreciate you taking all the precautions necessary.
You're welcome.
Me too, me too. Okay, um, where's my hammer? I haven't used my hammer at all this evening. We're back in session here for my recess. And I think that I'll, I'll read one more comment. And then we're going to launch into Part Two, Social Emotional Behavior and Mental Health. And I hope that folks have had a chance to perhaps download our document so that they can read along with us. The one comment, could the all-purpose room be used as an isolation area? I feel it would provide more space to distance potentially sick children than the tiny room across from the nurse's office. That room can't be more than eight by eight feet. I feel if parents knew that was the intended room, then many more would have issues with sending their children back to school. Inadequate ventilation, the number of children who frequent the nurse's office daily, and the space limitations don't provide for the best isolation area that could be made available. So perhaps our, our nurses, when they meet tomorrow, can consider that suggestion. Thank you very much for the suggestion. School committee members, are you willing to go past? I, I think our policy says actually nine o'clock, but I'm wondering if it says 10 o'clock and I don't have it here in front of me. But are you okay with trying to finish this off tonight so that we can send it back to the committee?
I am. I honestly, in Part Two, I didn't have as many, as many clarifications needed as I did in Part One.
Because our, our community may, but, but you're okay with that? And Ms. Bells, how about you? Are you okay with, until we get it done?
I'm okay with it as long as people don't mind. If I have not had dinner, I've been in a meeting since five and I'm starving. So as long as people don't mind me eating, I'm okay.
Okay, well, just turn off your mic for a few minutes and nobody, you can, turn off your video and nobody will even see you. And Mr. Patrasi, you okay?
I'm okay now because the dogs were scratching at the door because they were missing their evening snack. And I shared it with them, okay?
So you're okay to just get her done?
Yes, please, yes.
Thank you. And Ms. Dykett?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, getting her done?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go on to Part Two, Prior to Reentry. So, community members, this is your public comment time. Would you please go ahead and type in your concerns or what you think should be additional detail added into our plan? So it's about prior to students returning to school, professional development will be scheduled with all staff in accordance to their specific role and responsibility, as well as overall professional development for the entire staff where applicable. I don't see anything yet. Ms. Shumway, your margin notes, please.
With that first statement, that first paragraph, I am fine with that. I didn't have additional.
And then opportunities to communicate with parents in the community will be established. You have comments with that?
I do. I was looking for more specifics at this point, dates when those will be done, and what of those options are we choosing to do at this point in time? Because I think the communication needs to start happening now.
Okay. Thank you. And any other school committee members have input to those first two paragraphs?
I would just like to say thank you to all of the teachers and staff who have already done some professional development, I made over the summer. And, you know, the expectations that teachers and administrators walking into school, having this all under their belt, it's all new to us. So, you know, thanks to those who have, have already done some of that.
Yep, and you know, thanks to the MEA. I know that they've been providing educational opportunities and so has the DOE. So, over the summer, for people to take advantage of voluntarily. Moving to the third paragraph that goes, higher-needs students will be identified by the building principals and special ed director and a plan to communicate with them and their families will be made.
Yep, I think that's being done. I'm fine with that.
Training will be scheduled for learning about trauma-informed schools. And Superintendent Hodgkin will address special considerations for BIPOC students and other groups of students to create a culture of acceptance, which I, I know that he is doing. I don't see anything else from our community. All right. Any other school committee members want to weigh in on those other paragraphs? Moving on to structuring reentry to support the unique needs of your school committee. Working with all groups and subgroups of school personnel will be the focus of PD days. Any additions there or requests for additional details?
No, and I, in the first paragraph, I didn't have anything. I know, I feel like in the second paragraph, we had some public comments about that previously, that Superintendent Hodgkins, Hodgkin addressed, I was thinking. So I didn't feel like we needed any additional, I didn't need any additional information in this section.
So I would, I would, this is, this can be kind of a weird question because I, I liked what was said earlier, the school committee, you know, looking for the steering committee to make recommendations and not to try to micromanage this process. But, you know, I, I don't know if you want us to go back and reconsider a different type of grouping? You know, I mean, I could, I've had some conversations with Northeast Charter. It might make sense to do the geographical thing, but, you know, I don't know, I don't know our, where our people live in our community. That might be more challenging.
Did you just really want to maybe ask Lowry the question and see where that goes?
Well, he was part of the committee when we came up with the A through L, M through Z.
Maybe he just didn't, didn't come up with the other option.
All right.
I think that honestly, it's a good place to start and see where, and see if it would, and it might almost be helpful to tease this out a little bit because I know that I talked with Larry very early on. I think it was in June that, obviously, the number of students on a bus was going to determine what the cohorts were going to be. So if it turns out that A through L all live in the same area and would all end up being, too many people would be on a bus, then we would have to make an adjustment. But I think the alphabet is a great place to start. And then if adjustments need to be made from that, it makes sense.
Okay, so we're good with the first two paragraphs. And then the third, the system reserves the right to make other determination for establishing cohorts at the time that the color designation changes.
So.
I think that sort of answers perhaps your thought there a minute ago.
Yeah, actually, that, that means something else to me than what I said. But that's okay, if nobody else has any comments, I'll, I'll just let it go.
Go ahead, this is your chance.
Basically, what we talked about was, I think that was specifically put in there because we, we needed to kind of wait and see, you know, at the time, we thought as much as 40% or 50% of our students were going to stay home. We thought that might be the cohort designation if we change colors that already been, would have already been determined. But if 90% of our kids come back, then making cohorts based upon who was attending, who hasn't been attending, isn't, isn't possible. So I think that the real, that was really in there to buy us some flexibility with who shows up and who doesn't show up.
Oh, Larry responded. But before that, Priscilla Jenkins said, how many students can be in school self-distancing?
Students can be in school self-distancing? I don't know what self-distancing means.
Well, the, the three and six feet, I imagine.
Well, all, so I think that's part of why the administrators have, have had some real angst based upon the doc, the data we're getting from the, the community. Back when we thought it was going to be 30, 40%, all three building administrators felt, I mean, I don't have a number per se, but they all felt that they had, if they didn't have 30 to 40% of their students, they could easily take out the tables and put desks in, which is what they've done, and provide the adequate spacing for the six-foot or three-foot with masks. But that, even that guidance has changed now. So I, I know they all said, as I shouldn't say all of them, I know ones I spoke to today basically said there, if 92% of the students come back or 95% of the students come back, we're going to, we're going to be scrambling to, to be able to provide. Our, our classrooms aren't that big. It's not like we have an abundance of space, so it's, it's going to be a challenge. So I don't know what the number is.
Mr. Hodgkin, could you maybe just take a brief moment to explain to the community that is still on the call about how the administrators went about measuring space and determining the number? Like that process, just quickly so that people know that this has been done?
Yeah, very, very specifically, they've gone into each of their classrooms and they, they've taken a look at the amount of space that's in the room. And then they, they sort of marked off, or I don't know, marked off, but they, they could, they could estimate by actually going into the rooms, how many each room would hold. And honestly, it was the middle school, no, I'm sorry, the grade school and the high school were able to sort of do that pretty, you know, with, with, pretty accurately and based upon what we're expecting for numbers back. You know, feel pretty confident that we could, we could do what we needed to do. The middle school, this is Chris, has done a great job of, she has a number of classes that are 24, 28 kids in a class. And, and looking at if we put 14 kids in one room and 14 kids in another and how that, you know, how that, how they could still continue to be there in person and have direct construction all, all at the same time. But they have physically gone into the rooms and taken a look at the spaces and, and guess, not guesstimated, had plotted out how many they could safely put in the room and have the proper distancing.
Thank you.
I want to go ahead and read Larry Allen's comment, who is the representative from our bus company, Northeast. So the reason for the cohorts being done the way they are right now and not done geographically like one of our suggestions was it's the easiest way to divide the schools. It was simply time management when developing a cohort plan. Analyzing geographical data and student density will take a lot of time, time that we simply have not had to place into consideration at this time. And then Ms. Jenkins says, how many students can be put on the bus and properly distance? And I believe that's in our plan. We're at 23 students on a bus. And then Larry says that as far as the geographical cohorting, not impossible, just time-consuming. Oh, and then he says, go ahead, 23 at a three-foot distance with masks. Ms. Rayo says, I have heard that some schools are opening up using a cohort system in the green zone. One group of students attends two days and they have a remote learning day for all. And then the other cohort attends for the other two days. I am wondering why our school hasn't chosen to do the same. I know we're likely won't be opening at 100% attendance. I know we're likely won't be opening at a hundred percent attendance, but some of our classrooms seem rather small to accommodate all students assigned a teacher at once and maintain six feet apart. So, you know, the whole state is green. And to, to be a totally green plan would be everybody in person. So yellow would be that, it's a hybrid. And that's exactly what you've described as a hybrid plan there. And you know, like, and so some of our classrooms, as you've just heard Doc, Superintendent Hodgkin explain, some of them are sort of small and particularly a situation with Principal Chris in the middle school, who is working to find other classrooms if she has to divide it up. And again, I say that it's important for us to get fairly realistic numbers from our parents on that survey so that we can properly plan. Although I do have to say that when I was questioning the superintendent a while ago, he indicated that he had asked the principals to look at each one of their rooms with the idea in mind that a hundred percent of their students would be there and to come up with plans that would adequately physically distance them.
Can I add to that? Well, actually, going back to the, the possibility of going to a, a yellow model, even though we're green, is, is something the board or the committee can decide. I, I do think that there was a, and I would say, in the short time I've been here, I had the same sort of feedback that there was, is a fairly sizable population of people who preferred, I, I think there's a bunch of people who'd like to have their kids back in school five days a week. But I think a sizable percentage of people who spoke to me directly and the committee members wanted to have their students back in school more than two days is, none of the schools that I'm aware of that are using a cohort model as, as was described here are having this, their students go to school more than two days a week. So I, for me, I think the steering committee and the school committee all had the same feeling that we, if we gave people the choice to send them in person, then we should send them in person as much as we possibly can, and that was four days. And if they don't want them to be in, 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 in school in person, then they can remotely, you know, have them educated remotely. And so give them the most, I guess my take, and I would just speak for me, is that the green model should have provided the greatest flexibility for the public in general. And the yellow model further restricts, you know, the number of days they can go to school and what choices the parents have.
Thank you.
And if I can just follow up with that for the community that isn't very clear on what the DOE framework states, that the green, the green model of in-person learning can only happen if certain guidelines are met, like the physical distancing, the mask wearing, et cetera. And so that's why we have a steering committee that has dedicated so much time to making sure that we can open up our buildings in such a way so that we can have as many students learning in person safely. And so that is why we went with the green because based on the number of families that said they were going to be returning their students to the in-person learning, that it was at the time seventy percent. If we end up having ninety-five percent, then we may have to change our model and do more of a hybrid in order to fulfill that, that physical distancing requirement. So, so that is why that information is needed. And the, the survey has been asked to, to be sent back on the fourteenth in order for those determinations to be made once and for all.
They also say that this is covered later in the plan. This whole thing about green light, yellow light, red light is covered later in the plan.
Okay, thank you. We should move on. Anything more with, so this is B.
Nope.
Okay, let's move on to C, ongoing. Starts off with Winter Public School Staff and Administrators will have ongoing training in areas that are determined as needed throughout the year.
I'm good.
Check-ins with staff? Anything there, anybody? And Melissa Brewer? Oh. Okay. Let me just back up, Kristen. Melissa Brewer says, Larry, is that including family members that can sit together on the bus? And I'll just, oh, he, he tried to answer, once you load multiple family members together, you have to alternate the pattern as you continue to load the bus to maintain the three foot. So family members can sit together, however, there will be no benefit to the gross number we can fit in the cabin as a whole. Imagine every bench in the bus has one student, the pattern alternates row. One has a student on the window and the other has a student on the bench. Well, I assume on the aisle side. Those positions alternate in the next row, so. Thank you. And then from Ms. Rio, from what I understand, a hybrid model is acceptable in the green zone in order to reduce group size and increase capacity for physical distancing. I'm more concerned about our ability to maintain physical distancing in small spaces. And I think we've both tried to address that and, and you're correct. I mean, just because the state has said that we're, all counties are currently green, doesn't mean that we couldn't, as a school committee, determine that we're going to go red or yellow. But we've heard from the community nearer the beginning of this that our community really wants to have their children go back to school. And so we're endeavoring to do that as long as it's done safely. And it has to be done within the guidelines of the state. The state mandates at least six safety areas that we have to address adequately. So, ongoing, Winter Public Schools, there's nothing there you said from anybody. I think you said that. Check-ins, anything there? Anybody? No? Winter Public Schools will develop, that's the third paragraph. Will develop and publish a list of supports for children, parents and staff. This includes sensitive conversations. Anything there?
Nope.
Wow, everybody's okay with that. I just checked it off and I'm moving while I can. Part three, academic programs and student learning. A, engage staff in professional development over the summer in preparation for remote, in-person and hybrid instruction models. And Winter Public Schools established a steering committee for the reopening, da, da, da. Anything, anything there? Oh, so, community, now's your time to inform the school committee with any, any additions that you would like to see in Roman numeral part three A. Please.
Nope.
Anybody, any school committee people have anything in their margins?
I don't know. I guess my real quick thing.
I should have gone faster.
All right. And this is up to the committee, is that there has been some discussion about whether these three additional days, you know, at the last meeting, it was whether they were needed and we asked for agendas and so on and so forth. If the committee feels it's necessary to add in here, that three additional professional development days have been added in order to accomplish this, then great. If you feel like you don't need to, then I'm fine with that too. Because the days are, would, are being added or, once we approve the calendar, would be added to cover these sorts of things.
Staff will engage in professional development. Anything there prior to the start? Anybody? I don't see any hands or hear any voices. We'll go to B. Consider flexible grouping, multi-age classrooms, looping interdisciplinary courses and units. Winter Schools will delay the start of the opening for students in grades one through twelve until September eighth and so on and so forth. Anything? Anything from the community? Okay, second paragraph, these additional days will also permit staff to consider equitable low tech and so on. Anything there? Next paragraph, third paragraph. Staff will meet on a regular basis to consider changes to the model. I think we spoke to that earlier about a plan to evolve the plan. Anything, anybody?
I just wondered if maybe we should clarify that this sort of meeting, they will meet regularly or on a regular basis that are Wednesday day for that first quarter? That we could add that?
I'm sorry, Kristen. I was thinking the same thing.
Great.
We haven't determined for sure that Wednesday is the Wednesday day because we have that yet to vote on, but if it is, you know what I'm saying. Okay. All of this work will be done in collaboration with the building leaders. Anything there, anybody?
No.
Okay, I have to back up. So will, will parents slash community be invited to provide input at those meetings? I'm not sure which meetings you're referring to. So, so maybe you could help me with that. Which me, okay. Right input is the meetings in which to reevaluate the plan. I think that that will be done by the current steering committee that we have. So I would think that at any point in time, you can, through either Ms. Bells, the school committee lays on person between the school committee and the steering committee. You could call her or write to her, email her your concerns. Or the superintendent is the chairperson of that committee. You could email or call him to suggest additional information or clarification be put, or changes be put into the plan. All of this work will be done in collaboration. We did, we did go over that, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And did anybody have anything to put in there? No. Okay. So we're at C, formative assessment. And now is the time for a public comment. Any public comment on what we have for formative assessment conversation slash training will be provided via professional development prior to the start of the 2020, 2021 school year.
So while we're waiting for public comments or participation there, I want to just say to the school committee, or, and I know you, you have requested and we'll get a deep, as detailed as possible, accounting for the eight days. I know when we were talking, when we were processing this at our administrative team retreat, it was like, anybody who can read through these, these next two or three sections and wonder what we need time for, it's like, wow, that's, I mean, there's a ton of, of, of expectation and, and time that's, you know, specifically spoken to here.
Thank you.
Probably eight days worth of work right here.
I don't see any public comment. So from school committee people, your thoughts on C, formative assessment? Seeing none, I'm going to take that opportunity to move to D. Students with disabilities, students who are English learners, students who are Black, Indigenous and people of color and other special populations may be particularly impacted. And this broad range of topics will be discussed and planned to the extent possible during the professional development days prior to the, excuse me, start of school, et cetera. Any? Any public comment? Okay, I haven't forgotten the remote learning thing that's still on my list. I'm just waiting for a more appropriate time. Ms. Wilcox. So thank you for not letting me forget that because I don't want to. Anything else? School committee people on D, any, any requests for more details from the committee?
I don't need more details. I wonder if in the first section, if it's appropriate to add that those regular meetings will be occurring on, you know, could occur on that Wednesday, the Wednesday day, that that's what that could be used for, if appropriate.
What do you think Superintendent Hodgkin?
I think it's a great suggestion.
Okay, there we go. Educators will provide.
FAP.
Yep.
I already wrote my note in case somebody wants to jump on this. We, we get, we, we love our acronyms. So I, I already made a note that we should spell out what FAP stands for and what IEP stands for. And we can put, we can put what FAP is and then put in parentheses FAP so people will, will now know that. And IEP, we could put what that is and then put IEP so people will have it. So we do get carried away with our acronyms.
We do. Any, anything else there? I think that's a great idea, Superintendent Hodgkins. Okay, I'm moving on while I have the chance.
Oh, Sue has her hand up.
Oh, sorry, Sue.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Bells.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Oh, that's Sue. I'm sorry, Ms. Fossett.
No problem. Something that I hadn't had a chance to talk with the committee about at this point because it, it was just brought to my attention today. The department has created individualized remote learning plans, a template that most of the folks in the capital area are planning to adopt using that form. So any student that has an IEP, so an individualized education plans with special education student, if they're planning to participate in schooling in a remote fashion, we will be meeting prior to the start of school to develop that individualized remote learning plan as an accommodation to their current IEP. So we will be adding some language to that section specifically around the individualized remote learning plan as well.
Super.
Welcome.
Super. Thank you so much. So we worked through the first two paragraphs of D. We're on the third paragraph, which starts off, IEP and 504 accommodation plans. Anything there? IEP 504 meetings will continue to be scheduled. These meetings will be facilitated remotely via Zoom. Anything there? Ms. Chash says that's good to hear and.
Mrs. Fossett has something else.
Okay, I was just reading this.
I'm sorry. Sorry, my bad.
I'm reading the comment. Thank you, Sue from Miss Brewer. Ms. Fossett, go for it.
I, I just want to say publicly that our method of delivering IEP meetings through Zoom isn't always the best. We understand that. And, you know, as much as I would prefer to do in-person meetings for the safety of, of everyone, that's the purpose for doing remote meetings. If there are some concerns with that, I'm hoping that families will reach out individually so we can talk about ways to deal with that.
So you really have an open door and you want to hear from your folks?
I do, absolutely.
Thank you. Student data. Speech occupational and physical therapy. Initial referral testing and annual tri-annual reviews will resume and meetings scheduled again via Google. Well, it says here either in person or via Zoom, Google, will that change or yes?
It's a typo. I'm, it should say all IEP meetings will be held through Zoom.
Okay. So I assume the committee, do you serve on that committee, Ms. Fossett? Okay, so I assume that you'll make sure that those changes are made. Thank you. Additional accommodations and frequency of in-person instruction may differ depending on individual student needs. Any additions? And all students identified as needing English language learner support accelerated studies gifted and talented program and or response to intervention supports will continue to receive services of part of any hybrid model.
So I'm going to suggest the opposite of what I just said. And those places where we spelled them out, English language learner, later on, it's, it's referred to by its acronym VLL and response intervention later on is, is is RTI. So I, I will put those in parentheses after that so that it'll make more sense later on.
Okay, thank you. Students will be assessed in RTI, here it is right there, which is response to intervention. Determinations will be made in the fall. Anything there from anyone?
So my only question was, is that, is that has this process been developed? I know we have a current RTI model and plan and is that plan able to be applied here or do we need to create something new? That was my only question.
I believe that the plan that we have in place will be what we'll be following. I don't think we, we'll need to change that.
Okay, thank you.
The paragraph that begins ELL RTI title one and GT, anything there? Teachers will continue to monitor progress, assess student performance on specific learning needs, et cetera. Anything there? Additional accommodations and frequency of in-person instruction may differ depending on individual student needs. Specialized instruction for ELL students. Anything there? Okay. Part four, common expectations for hybrid and remote learning. So I'm going to start, Winter Public Schools has opted to be prepared to teach both in-person and remotely based upon our staff and parent surveys. With their public schools are creating a model that satisfies the requirements of a green light plan and a yellow light plan. We anticipate that a number of parents may not send their children back for in-person school. However, the opportunity to do so is available to them. And I'm going to ask a question about the, about remote education now that was asked two hours ago. So the question was, if I recall it correctly, and if I don't do this well, perhaps the parent will get back to me. They would like to know some of the details about how the remote education will occur. How will how will we deliver pamphlets, paperwork, tools in the case of something like art or science or how will we deliver those things to children so that they can have a similar experience as their in-person folks will be receiving?
So the, the quick answer to that is, is that's part of the reason we have that additional time for process and planning because we're going to expect that, that staff will put together packets or information to go home. But only back up even before that. I, I mentioned this earlier, but I just want to reiterate that all of the students will be provided with a, a device that they can tune in for their instruction. That the teachers are either going to do live streaming or if they choose to, to do it separately. So that's, that's the first part, but the materials getting to them, we will, we will plan, I mean, Winter is not a geographically challenging area to, to get stuff out. So we will plan, we, we will not expect, I guess to the extent any parent is willing to come pick stuff up, that's great. But we're, we're going to take a look at the students who are remotely, who are, who are joining us remotely and we will put together a plan to get the materials to them, books to them, packets that the teachers will put together, we will get that to, to them. We know, and somebody asked a question earlier, I thought this might be the same part same question, we're not going to expect parents to, to download and create copies of, of the materials on their own. That's, that, that would not be a realistic expectation. And we're going to provide laptops and stuff so the students can tune in, but we're now going to provide copiers and, and such. So, you know, our books were, so we got to, we would expect that we're going to be responsible for getting those to our remote learners.
So we're not making suggestions to parents who are going to have children that are going to opt for the remote learning. We're not going to tell them they need to go get a couple cases of paper now so they can download all the work.
Correct. Absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you. So I got the question in and I hope I did a good job. Oh, so here it is right here. How will remote learning families get paperwork for their students to begin? Appropriate to expect families to cover the cost of print. We don't expect you to. We spent a good amount of time printing off worksheets this spring. That's good to hear. Okay. So I, I hope your question was answered as well as we know the answers to your question. I hope we've shared them wealthy.
So one of, one of the things that didn't get covered in there and I, and we, and again, we need to sort of, I don't know, we can put it in this plan, but there's, there's two sides to that. Last spring, we weren't necessarily expecting students to return work. This year we will be. So we, we not only have to figure out how to get work to them, we have to figure out how to get work from them.
Correct.
We'll do that.
That's a good comment. I'm not, when will we find out exactly how the remote learning will work? What are they using to teach?
Using our curriculum.
Yeah.
Yep, they're using our, we're going to use our curriculum. Somebody asked earlier, there'll be the same expectations for the students that are in person as they are for remote. So I, I don't know how else to address that.
I don't either. Teachers in the South have provided huge packets of paper assignments. I'm wondering if most of the learning will be online regardless of in-school or remote.
I don't know how to respond to that. It's that'll be a parent choice.
Well, I, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to interpret the question and it, I'm wondering if they're asking, will most of the learning, even if the student is in person, be a teacher just teaching through just computer stuff? And I don't think so. But I, I'm not, I'm not sure how to interpret that question. If you want to try me again, please do, Ms. Arsenal. Stacy says, will all students be given computers PK 12?
That's my understanding unless something has changed, but we are expecting to provide devices for our, all of our students who are being taught remotely.
Well, even if they're not, they'll all have computers PK 12, I believe. Is that an accurate statement on my part?
My, that's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So yes, is it through Zoom or, okay, so the, the, through Zoom or live streaming or packets?
So Sue Fossett just private messaged me with this answer, but I already knew it. I'm, I'm on top of this and we have, we made a, have chosen pre-K two that we're going to use CSO and that the rest of the, the two through, I mean, three through 12, I'm going to check her notes. It's, they're going to use Google meets and Google classroom.
The Songo Lock School used the buses to get paperwork to and from students as well as their lunches.
Yeah, that's a very, very strong possibility that we'll do the same thing.
Miranda Cook used buses for this as well. Thank you, folks.
And Holton, where I was before, we use buses for the same thing. So in much larger geographical area.
Thank you. Okay, so for part four, any, any requests for additional detail there?
I had a couple areas.
Okay.
One pretty specific. So if we're counting the paragraphs, I'm at paragraph nine, which is on my copy, the next next page over, but it basically says, remote learning will take place following the established school schedule. So I just want to clarify this, that the remote learning that is being referenced in this paragraph is only under the red light model, correct? So that's not the expectation under the if you choose to do remote from home while everyone else is in-person learning and that the, this isn't the expectation for the Wednesday. If we're doing the four-person in-person in the Wednesday, I just want clarification on what that means.
I, actually, Kristen, I think that whole thing, I think it, the whole thing needs to be clarified because that was initially built upon a, a presumption that the teachers were going to livestream, excuse me, livestream and/or record their, their instruction. Since in a number of meetings and that's going to be more of a teacher choice. So that whole paragraph needs to be reworked. It's probably not going to say that. I think your first statement is probably not true and we need to clarify that. I don't think that's specifically, actually, I would say it's definitely not attached to the red light plan because we would have to come up with a different, it would be really hard to do, to do that following the red line, red light plan. If it said, it could be as just as simple as saying, remote learning will take place following an established school schedule. Let's be set up, but I, I don't want to, I'm just throwing that out. I'm just saying it, it all needs to be reworked.
Okay. And then my other one's a pretty big one, and I think that, that we don't need to get into a huge discussion about it, but I don't feel like it's addressed anywhere. So correct me if I'm, if I missed it. But if a student is remote due to illness, is there a plan for their learning? So I guess I'm wondering, could they, because I know we don't want people going back and forth from remote to in-person to remote. But if they are required to quarantine for 14 days, let's say that that's what our model says, then will they be able to remote learn from home during that time?
Yes, actually, I don't know. I thought you were asking a different question first. But the answer to that is yes, if we need to put that in here somehow, we probably should. If they're home because they're sick, but it's not COVID and they, there's a, there's a reason they can't attend in person, then we'd probably be referring them for a 504 plan. So that would be specifically addressed in the 504. Mrs. Fossett, do you want to weigh in on that? Am I, do you think I'm right about that or do you think it's something different?
So I think I'm hearing something a little bit different. So if a student is, is out because they're ill and it's long-term illness, absolutely, Mr. Hodgkins. A 504 plan would be appropriate, but if a student has been asked to quarantine for a short period of time, I think as a committee, we talked about, yeah, they would absolutely, we would want them to be remote learning so that they're not missing their educational opportunity. It's really around, if a family talks about being in remote and then wanting to jump into in-person, it's around being able to plan for that student's return and make sure that there's space sort of designated.
Okay, so if we could perhaps address that maybe in that section or where you deem appropriate. And may, and maybe say remote due to illness and specify the difference between remote due to illness and remote due to quarantine if needed.
And maybe be really specific about the illness.
What do you mean?
Well, non-COVID. You're trying to address both things.
I don't know that's a good idea, but.
Okay. Jana?
A question, I don't know if that, where it should go or, or if it should be addressed. It may be not a, an issue once Joel gets updates from the MPA, but if we have students that are remote learning, will they be allowed to participate in sporting events, clubs, meetings, student counts, I mean, I like activities that don't necessarily take place in school or all of that. Has that been addressed anywhere?
Not specifically in the plan because I think we'd only address it in the plan if we, in the, if we intend to do something different. The, there are students, so if they want to participate in something outside the school day, we would, we would, we would have, I would say we'd add it into the plan if we weren't going to let them. And I think we would lose that fight if we, if we took that position. So I, I did not see it. We did talk about that and that was kind of essentially the plan. Same thing is true. Maybe we do need to address this for the, for our homeschool students because generally speaking, we try, well, I shouldn't say that, I shouldn't say generally speaking, for me personally, students who choose to be homeschooled can participate in school and it's actually financially beneficial for us to let them do that. But it's not, again, it's sort of, I, I would write a plan if we were not going to let them. I guess I would say that. And right now our plan is to let them.
I'm just going to interrupt here because Larry Allen from Northeast wrote, I believe the remote learning plan is for the remote students to tune in to their teacher during the day. So they will be potentially learning exactly the same material at exactly the same time as the person, as the in-person learners. So remote students will be expected to attend class during the same hours as the in-person learners. Again, this is what I believe the plan is and I agree, I agree with you that that's the thinking. Do you agree?
That has changed.
Oh, it has.
Well, somewhat, yeah, we, we, again, I, I think I had mentioned, we met with the association leadership and I think there were people who were bravely concerned about doing it, you know, at the same time in.
Synchronously, yeah.
Synchronously, yeah. And I think they would prefer asynchronously, which is not at the same time. And we were taught, we talked about giving the teachers the opportunity, if they want to record their lessons at a different time, then they, they can do that. And so that's kind of where we stand right now. I'm, our hope is, you know, again, I don't want to get too far into the weeds here because we're doing really well. But the, the whole notion initially from the steering committee was to try not to put additional burden on the teachers to, to prep for their in-person and then prep for their remotes. But, but staff have spoken pretty clearly about concerns and, and being uncomfortable with that. So we've, I think we've, we've adjusted a little bit.
Is that going to be specified in the plan here somewhere? Do you think it needs to be? I guess is another question.
Yeah, I don't know. It's both, and I know they're both trying to say, but, but you know, there are three members of, of the teaching staff that are on. there are three members of the teaching staff that are on the committee, including the co-presidents for the association, so I would say I would, I would follow their guidance if they want to include it in the planning, include it in the plan. So, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to write the note from before, so.
I'll read another message here. Just want to confirm the answer to what Kristin brought up. "If I keep my child home due to symptoms per the guidelines, though doubtful of being COVID, can he jump on remote learning for those days?" And the answer is yes, that is our intent. We don't want anybody to miss school.
That's true. What we're also hoping is that they will, we don't want, I was hearing there was some feeling in the community they could, you know, on a daily basis pick between one or the other, and we really are trying to discourage that. I think if they, you know, this, this is a perfect example. Somebody has symptoms and they're, and the parent is being cautious and it doesn't necessarily, it might be as, as Dr. McConnell said earlier, it might be cold symptoms and they keep them out for two or three days. They're not necessarily feverish, but they don't want to run the risk, and so they keep them home for those two or three days, and they wanted to do remote during that time, they certainly can do that.
I think it will make it difficult to get any of the paperwork, and so that'll have to be worked out on sort of daily. It's going to require good communication between the school and the parents. So that, and then Marshall Luskey writes, "Yep, we, we think it needs to be in the plan." So there you go. And from, "Will remote learning eliminate snow days?" Well, that has been our hope, so, but I'll let the superintendent.
I would say exactly what you said, that's our hope. I would, I would love to see us become so good at, at, you know, and I think Miranda Cook modeled it for us last year. I know the commissioner has been very excited about the possibility of doing, doing away with snow days, and if we get really good at remote learning, then we can do the same thing.
Thank you. Laura Trash writes, "What are the privacy rights of in-person students when slash if the teacher is providing livestream instruction to remote learners?"
So, you know, there's, probably, that's probably the conversation that gets talked about the most with the various superintendent groups. I think there was some real concern initially about FERPA violations, but it really depends on the mode in which the, the second device is used to film instruction. It's not a FERPA violation to, to hear all the voices and stuff like that. It's, it's about identifiable stuff, so it's, it's not a, it's not a cakewalk, it's not a simple, you know, whatever, but I, you know, it's, if you're filming kids and putting that out on the livestream, that's a clear violation. All the rest of the stuff, we're getting sort of mixed signals, and we probably will continue to pay attention to, you know, there are people who want to, want to livestream, who want to do instruction in real time, and I want to be able to support the people who want to do that. So we, you know, but obviously, if we get, we get guidance from the either DOE or our attorneys that say that's a FERPA violation, that wouldn't recommend you do that, then we'll have to make a different determination. Right now, we're not getting that.
And just to add a smidgen on that, if, if we're talking about our groupings and our numbers of people who are remote and our people who are, are students who are in-person, that there may be a possibility that we can have teachers dedicated just to remote, our remote students, but that all dependent upon the number of students that are going to be in-person and the number of students that are going to be learning remotely, as to whether or not that model can be followed.
Yeah, I think you, you know, and I talked about that a little bit earlier in my, actually my superintendent's report. The, that's why I'm really pushing hard. I know, I really like to see us figure out these issues that make parents feel comfortable about getting their kids back to school, because those types of adjustments and what we can do with teachers who, who can't come back because of, because of their own medical issues, and I want to be able to, to, you know, meet the needs of, of everybody, and that was, I think I mentioned earlier, that was what the West Main Educational Collaborative talked about yesterday, that's with the Kennebec Valley Superintendents, that's what our regional service center, all those things are possibilities, but we won't know that until we, we get kids back here and see who shows up and who doesn't.
Thank you. Kelly Cooper, "Does that mean that students should plan on bringing devices home daily?" Yes. And Melissa Brewer to everyone, "Is this a good time to ask about attendance?" And I think probably it is, mostly because I think we have sort of an answer for it. So I, I think then to expand on your question, how will we be able to take attendance in our, particularly our remote classes? So Superintendent Hodgkin, I, I know that you were looking into a couple of different types of apps, but, or.
So there, we were, there was one that we were hopeful, and it looks like upon further review, it's probably not going to do what we want, but it may be that it is, you know, if you're doing any of those platforms, it basically shows who's on there, and so we're just, you know, the worst-case scenario is that we just take a look who's on and record that. If you're doing, that's if you're doing it livestream. If you're going to do it, you know, via recording, then we'll have, the, the Google Meets will keep track of who's, who's logged in and who hasn't. Somebody suggested that we do that based upon who turns in their, the work that's assigned, but that's, will not be accurate, and I don't think it's a good plan.
Yeah, and Ashley Arseneau just asked the question that you tried to answer. If they are not live, they will not be able to take attendance.
Actually, they can. Anytime somebody, and that's, we're, we're going to verify that, but I'm quite certain that if they, if they want to log in to see the instruction or they, they follow a particular time that they're going to look at the instruction, then we will be able to track that.
Thank you. School committee thoughts, questions, requests for more details?
I didn't hear you specifically ask me to do this, but it would make sense, someone here to, to talk about attendance.
To talk about what?
Attendance. You know, it's not, it's not specifically in the plan, so, yeah.
Yeah. The, the Wednesday being the, the, the no, the, let's see.
No in-person.
Okay, the no-in-person day, thank you. Since it's brought up here, I was going to wait until we load it on separately, but does that day coincide with Capital Area Tech?
Yep, I, I think so. Nick Yanon, the director, hasn't, I haven't heard back from him specifically. What I did hear back from him specifically was, he's going to accommodate everybody. And quite frankly, he's told me that it's going to be easier to accommodate us with a, with, with the green light plan we have right now, the green light hybrid plan of four days, and it will be for places that are going to, two days with one cohort and then two days with another cohort. Will be, our kids will be much easier to accommodate.
I'm just bringing that up because one of the reasons that we were given for the four-day in-person week was that that's what Capital Area Tech was doing.
Well, I think Mrs. Fawcett can, Mrs. Fawcett can probably weigh in. I could tell you Augusta has made a number of changes to their schedule and Capital Area kind of gave up on trying to do exactly what they're doing, and so they, that's what Nick said, basically, they'll accommodate. So do you want to weigh in?
Well, I've been kind of going between both meetings because the Augusta School Board is also meeting right now, and they've been talking about the same plan, and Augusta's looking at having Wednesdays as a remote day as well. But because of the size of their buildings, they can't accommodate all students within their settings, so they're doing the alternate days.
The cohort.
Their cohort. So they're looking right now, from what I understand, is that they're doing a Tuesday, Thursday with cohort A, and, no, no, Monday, Thursday with cohort A and a Tuesday, Friday with cohort B.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that means then that Nick is going to try to have his staff there all five days, ready to go?
Well, it sounds like based upon what Mrs. Fawcett just reported, that I believe Miranda Cook is not having students in-person on Wednesdays, Halldale is not having people in-person on Wednesdays, so it sounds like there is now consensus. I could verify that tomorrow. We have a Kennebec Valley Superintendent's meeting tomorrow, but I, just based upon that, Augusta was the only one that was still up in the air. Last I knew, they were talking about Mondays, and quite honestly, Jen, not Jen, Kristin, I, I, you know, I told them what our considerations were for going away from Monday to Wednesday, and they, now they've, I'm not saying they're following our lead, but they, it looks like they've changed their mind and gone to Wednesdays.
Excellent.
But I think that's, just in case you, in the rest of you forgotten, the, the part that was, I really didn't have a good answer for is if we're going to do, we're going to continue to do meals, then Monday, taking Mondays off would really be disruptive to that, and so what we would gain by not missing school on, on a, you know, having it on a Monday, that was one reason. And the second reason was, and I think this is even more important for me, with what we're going to be asking from our staff, this is about taking care of the staff. If they work, if they do Monday and Tuesday, and then Wednesday is a process plan time, so they, there's two days with kids and then doing some remote stuff. Wednesdays, they're going to process that stuff, do some planning. It's, I don't want to call it a down day because it isn't that, it's a different day. So they have two days with, with students live and remote, a day with process and planning, and then two days with students, and, and live and remote. It just feels like it breaks that week up and better take care of our teachers' mental health and well-being.
Thank you. Ms. Brewer writes, "Keeping track of absences slash illnesses is what my concern is. Not sure how it will be tracked."
So.
I, I think that's still something in, in work, in the works.
Yeah, but I, I guess, and I can talk to, to Nurse Brewer, you know, we can talk separately. I, I'm not concerned, I mean, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't track students who are absent and stuff like that, but in terms of why we need to do that, I think that's, that's less important to me than, than a number of these other issues. We are, it, it can't be, let's see who turns their work in, but ultimately, what plans we need to make for, for students will be based upon what we get for information from them. If they're not turning their work in, I mean, I'm sorry, if they're not tuned into instruction and they're doing, they're doing, they're being successful, you know, I don't like it, it's not good, but I'm, I'm not sure we're going to punish them for not attending if their, if their work is quality.
Right. We can talk later, too, that's, that's totally fine. I just, for me, for the Department of Education, they, and it may change, obviously, everything is changing, but, you know, if we hit the 10% mark or 15% mark of absence, we're supposed to report that, and, you know, and that's if they're all ill, right? Or they're sort of sick, and that's just a requirement on my end. So I just, that is where my question is, and we had a pretty good process last year with, you know, with the secretaries, we had a pretty good reporting, you know, I got a list of all the students that were absent that day, and, and then I followed up with the parents if there was any questions or the parents didn't call, call them in. So I guess it's going to be a work in progress and we can, and a trial, trial and error kind of thing, too, because I know we're not the only ones in this boat, so I just didn't know if it was a talk of any, of, you know, the committee.
Yep, yep.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, from the school committee, are there any requests on part four? It's a long part, but on any other parts of it? So, you know, we, we go through, plan for yellow, plan for red, and please let me include the community public comment if you have anything there. We're starting to wind down here. Last spring, teachers were required to learn on the job. Anything there? Oh, wow. Okay, part five. So for the community, now's your time to look over part five on our long form and, and make some public comments, please. And that has to do with adult education. Plans for adult education related recommendations will be formulated by the Adult Ed Director in conjunction with the Adult Ed staff, and you've heard, you heard him earlier this evening make some comments about that. Adult information will be updated on the website. Is there any comment from? Okay, is there any comment from the public about regarding the adult education portion of the long form here? Kristin had to get a charger, so we'll be able to come back to that. How about career and technical education, Capital Area Tech? We just spoke very quickly about that, but is there any, any thinking from the public or from the school committee about that, about Capital Area Tech?
So hopefully, I, I have a printed copy, obviously, I'm looking at here, but on the, if you go on the website and you look at this thing digitally, digitally, easier for me to say earlier in the night, but that's a live link, so you can, should be able to click on and get those, that specific information.
Right, thank you. And child nutrition program. Chef Erin Weeks will work with the building principals and SMP staff to ensure that all required training has been taken, is taking place and other considerations listed by the framework are met and documented. Meals will be provided upon request on days that are not in-person as well as for remote learners. Is there any additional detail about how that'll be done, Superintendent Hodgkin?
I'm meeting with Chef Erin next week, so at this point, the answer is no, but she may, she did talk about some specifics, but I, I don't know how, you know, really specific we want to be here, except she, you know, she has a plan for how to feed, you know, how to, how to physically distance and feed the, the students in the cafeterias. But that's a lot of specificity.
Okay.
Yeah, that was my, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, there will be a plan available for people to see eventually?
I can ask Chef Erin to do that. I think she's still on. Erin, are you still on with us? I don't see her. No, I think she's not, not on with us anymore.
No.
That was my only question, was what would lunch look like? And would there be any major changes with that? And obviously, it would be specific to each building.
Yeah, I, I will tell you, and you asked this earlier, Janice, so I'll just, for those that are still listening, Yeah, I, I will tell you, and you asked this earlier, Jenny, so I'll just, for those that are still listening, the principals have also, and I think that with Erin, with Chef Erin, have gone through and looked at the physical spaces and they have a plan. I can tell you they have a plan. We can try to articulate it here for having the students get lunch in the cafeteria without, you know, there was some concern about, we don't want them standing in line, that it's not efficient. We will not be able to serve lunches that way. So we will physically distance the, the table, not tables, but the, whatever, guest desk, whatever they're going to sit at. And, and they will go around, they will go to them. And I, I probably shouldn't even have gone that far because Chef Erin has a really clear picture in her mind and Jim Hodgkin doesn't. So I just know that, I trust her and, and she shared that with the administrators and they all seem to be pretty on board with it.
Excellent.
Kristen, while you were gone, we went through adult ed and career and technical education. Is there anything you wanted to add to either one of those?
No, yep.
Anything else on school nutrition program, child, child nutrition programs? And let me see. Ms. Brewer says, is the, are the school hours going to be the same? Marina Cook has shortened days for school for two days and work remotely for three days.
So Chairperson Guyer, I know I mentioned that to you, that may be one of the things we, we look at. Right now, we've made a decision to not shorten the day and to go with Wednesdays. That, there are a myriad of possibilities and a number of people have commented on different things that are happening in other places. But that's one of the, the, the possibilities that we come back and we, we realize it's, it's too much of a burden on our, on our staff to do all these hours of live instruction, in-person instruction, and then do the remote. I know, I didn't speak to Mr. Charette, Superintendent Charette from, from Marina Cook, but I spoke with another district, I think I mentioned it earlier, that's doing this exact same thing. And they're doing school from nine to one, and then from like one to 2:30 or one to three, the teachers are doing remote stuff. And in exchange for that, they're, you know, they, they're basically covering everything from nine to one. But it's, you know, that's, that's going to require some meet and consult and some, you know, those types of things if what we're doing, what we do doesn't appear to be working.
Right. So then. Ms. Wilcox writes, one last question, can a student go to school for two days and work remotely for three days?
No. No. Unless, unless there are, you know, specific reasons why they have to do that, but just to keep flip-flopping is not fair to, to the school and, and you know, that, I would not support that.
Right. So, and, and just to beat that a little bit more, we, we made the decision quite some time ago that for everybody involved, we need parents to commit their child to one or the other.
Yep.
And the exception would be if we have a, you've heard throughout this evening, if we have a child with symptoms or is sick and was previously in person, yes, they would be encouraged to go remote for the time that they need to stay at home. But that would be the only exception that I can think of right now. Are we ready to move on to transportation? Hearing no no's.
Miss school, you miss school health.
How can that be?
I don't know.
Thank you. School Health Office. Ah, Dr. Jennifer McConnell is working with the nurses to address and articulate the plans to deal with these four bullets. In addition, they have helped in the identification of the isolation rooms in each one of the buildings and in securing additional BPE. So I suspect if they have any more guidance from DOE or CDC, that they will be adding that in for detail in here in the future.
I, I know I heard them say earlier that they're meeting tomorrow and, and I just wrote a note on here, obviously there's more details that, that could be added here. So I'm certainly going to look to, to that group to provide us with whatever details they want to add here.
Melissa Brewer, just to clarify, said Marina Cook is doing eight to one.
Yeah, I, the place I would talk to is doing nine to one. Yeah, I mean, but the, the point is some sort of modified day so that essentially all hands can be on deck and provide some coverage during the time that you're doing in person and then to provide some time for teachers to do some remote planning later in the day, as well as eat.
Public comment on the School Health Office? And any school committee people have any additions?
Oh, mine was answered.
Okay.
I think, I think Nurse Melissa was trying to weigh in, I know she's, maybe I just misread that.
Yeah, I like to talk, as you can see. No, um, I did, I, um, I did share with Dr. McConnell tonight, Emily Pollan, like I said, the DOE nurse consultant. There's an amazing community handout. I can't remember how many pages it's, it is, but we are going to review that tomorrow. It is already completed by the, like I said, the main DOE and CDC and has pretty much everything that we've talked about as far as the concerns that the community has all written out for us, including the screening process and everything. So I thought that was a good find and we will share that and get that out hopefully sooner than later. I would say by, you know, tomorrow we'll review, tomorrow night we're going to review and send it out to you, whoever, you know.
And then, then you'll have, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, that's okay, Jenny.
Then as Dr. McConnell mentioned much earlier this evening, you'll sort of have a schedule of suggested material that needs to go out to staff and to parents.
Correct.
Before school, way before school, and then perhaps as things come up during school.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Seeing none, I'll, I'll go to, I tried to do this early, go to transportation now. Regarding transportation, this is from Ms. Rio. I don't know if this has already been discussed, but I am curious to know how many bus runs and if there will be multiple bus runs, staggered start and end times within the individual schools, all three buildings, or more buses running at one time to get all students to school? At the same time during, due to the limited number of students, each bus is able to accommodate at one time?
So I would just say, and actually it's not in here, but we, we have asked Northeast Charter to give us, to provide us with, and they have provided us with the cost of having four additional runs. We honestly don't know at this point, and I think Larry, if he's still on the line, probably be pulling his hair out to hear me say this. But it's a huge use of our CRF funds to, to pay for additional runs. Right now, we're looking at 11. And the, the maximum one of buses, 23. He, he thought based on his knowledge of the number of students and what the placement was, that, that 11 should be enough. That's 11 for the grand, for the grade school and 11 for middle school, high school. So it's an additional four runs. And again, we'll have to try it. I'm not in favor, I will, I want to just say this here now that we did discuss an administrative team about the notion of asking parents who could to, to transport their own children. That has its own set of liability concerns for us, but ultimately, we, we won't know if 11 is the right number. I can tell you, we are definitely expanding by four. We're not doing staggered starts. What we are doing is we are going to do staggered drop-offs. So for instance, when they, for the, for the middle school and the high school, they will unload one bus at a time and they will file in based upon that. So it'll be essentially 20, no more than 23 students coming in at any one time and they're both Mrs. Chris and Mr. Campbell have a, a protocol for where they're going to go, so they don't just go en masse to, you know, into the school and you know, they, they need to socially distance and make sure they go where they're supposed to expeditiously.
Thank you. And Ms. Ray who says, thank you too.
Just to follow that a little bit, that covered all of what I had for this section. I think we should add more specifics like we just talked about. One thought that I had about the staggered drop-off at each building is that since the middle school, high school, I didn't know if it was possible for half the buses to go up to the middle school and half the buses go to the high school and do their drop-off. You know, the one bus at a time. But if we're talking about 11 buses all lined up and, and, you know, emptying out one at a time, we're going to create quite a backup on Rambler Road. So if half of the buses went to the high school and did their one bus unloading at a time, half of them went to the middle school, did that and then flip-flopped. It was just, just a thought of the traffic backup on Rambler Road.
Yep.
I, I, I think also we're talking about buses delivering remote supplies to students and lunches to remote students being delivered. Have we looked into what that will look like?
No, I, I think I said that earlier. That's, that's how it's been done in other places. We, I will need to talk to Northeast Charter about doing that as well. But that may be something they're willing to take on, and we may have to look at some other alternatives. Like I said, it's, Winthrop is not a huge geographical area, so buses may be a possibility. Or we can look at some other, you know, other ways to possibly get that done.
Anything else on transportation? The, the one thing that, if we, if we declare transportation done, the one thing that just seems to be missing for me from this entire document, but is in different places and parts, is because maybe we, we have a contract would, would be additional cleaning in the buildings during the day.
Yeah, that, that came up earlier, I'm sorry.
So I, I don't think that that's specifically addressed, is it? Or am I brain dead?
Nope.
Okay, so, so I'd like, I'd like to see that specifically addressed because it's certainly addressed in the documents that I've read from DOE and and CDC about the cleaning of the public areas that are used quite often during the day. And then there would be the, you know, our, our, our grade school students, when they have recess, are, are we going to allow them to use the equipment? You know, Kristen brought that up earlier.
Yep.
Because that should, all the cleaning involved with that, as well as the bathrooms and doorknobs and desktops, et cetera. So I have that concern that that seems to be sort of missing overall from the document. I'd like to see that addressed. And then I have a sort of liability question. We, as a school system, we employ Northeast and we employ FMS for custodial and Northeast for transportation, obviously. And, and DOE and CDC have specific guidelines for the, the cleaning of the buses and for the, the, there's specific guidelines for chemicals that are used for disinfecting. That's in a list called the N-list, I guess. The, the chemicals that are used by FMS. I, I, I guess one of the comments that I've received has a concern, which has been an ongoing concern, about the quality of cleaning. And so I think that we have some community members that are concerned that cleaning is done competently. And so how do we address that? I, I was talking earlier with Ms. Bells and I suggested that we get a document for the school system that, from, from both people that we contract with, that stipulates that they will be maintaining the DOE and CDC requirements for cleaning of the buses and for the, the chemical products that are used, as well as cleaning for MSS, FMS for the cleaning of our facilities. So that I know as a school system, that at least they've put on paper that they're guaranteeing that those standards will be adhered to by their employees. I think that makes it safer for our school system, but I'd welcome a dialogue about that from the superintendent.
So I, I would just, actually, if I addressed both of those, I don't know, I can look at adding some specifics to the document when we have that. I don't really want to have the conversation about the competency of our, of our contracted service.
No.
You know, I've heard people express some concerns about that and, and I said, I, I have a meeting with, I can't think of what his name is, but, but the guy who's in charge of that next week, Colleen, do you remember when that was?
Ricky O?
No, that's, that's, let's, I'm talking about, go ahead.
Patrick Dillon.
Yes, from FMS. I'm meeting with him next week, right, or is it tomorrow? Sometime soon. I have an external brain, thank God. Anyway, so I'm going to express the concerns in a general way that I've heard, but I'm, I'm, you know, I, I've heard from people saying we should not, whatever, I don't want to, I want to be careful.
I don't want to talk about any personnel things, but I can tell you that it's a concern by the community.
I'm just going to say that I, I've addressed both in the plan and with the use of, of the, the funds to get additional cleaning, both during the day, you know, I, I, whatever, it's a different plan with respect to after-school and the O2 thing I would talk about earlier, but this is about everything that you just talked about, high-traffic areas, you know, bathrooms, you know, desktops, those types of things. Some of that conversation needs to happen with the staff, but to, to get additional support, to make sure, you know, the cafeteria is, is appropriately cleaned up between lunches and those types of things, you know, that's part of the conversation. I, I think I can report very confidently that Northeast Charter has already addressed that issue and in the price that they gave us and the, that's what I was looking for, just somebody looking around. Their plan addresses daily cleaning of their buses and, and was quoted the price for additional daily cleaning of their buses. So that, that's already been addressed and, and if we. on daily cleaning of their buses. So that that's already been addressed. And and if we get approval of the 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 funds, then it's that's what will happen with it.
Yeah, I think we've addressed it, but one of the things, just to keep our school system safe, so that we can approve that we've addressed it with the two folks that we contract services from, I think I want it in in black and white. And Larry writes, happy to provide our proposed sanitizing, disinfecting protocols, all processes we have developed follow CDC recommended EPA approved hospital grade disinfectants and. I think that kind of thing is what we need to have in the file.
You want to know what it is or you want?
No, I I think we we need to have that kind of thing that Larry just wrote there, signed and in a file.
Why am I not? Yeah.
From both from both our contracted services.
Okay. I couldn't find Larry. I just found him. So good.
Okay. It's it has nothing to do with trusting or personal anything. It has only to do with getting the paperwork that will. Tell people that we've that we've covered that.
Yep. So I I, you know, I I do. When I had asked Kristen earlier about the notes that I didn't get down. Everything you just discussed is what we're talking about. So.
Yes. Okay, perfect. And and since we're at the end of the form, I will take all of what I wrote down and I will copy it and I will bring it by the office tomorrow.
Awesome. Appreciate that.
Yep.
She's worth her weight in gold, isn't she?
Colleen will appreciate it more.
Colleen does. Thank you.
From Dan Dumay, thanks to the school committee, steering committee's staff and Superintendent Hodgkins for putting in the long hours to get this plan as formulated as possible to the to this point in what clearly needs to remain a fluid social solution due to a moving target and guidelines. Agreed. Thank you. And from Melissa Brewer, thank you all. Thank you. We still have more on our agenda if some of you you know, want to stick with us. But we certainly thank the whole community that has stuck with us. And I know we started with like 86 and what are we? We're down to 42, but thank you for sticking with us and the the document will be a better document for all of your input. So we we appreciate that. So so we have a motion on the floor, School Committee folks, and that is to approve this document. I think my suggestion would be to table that and ask it to go back to committee and come back to us. And then if need be, whatever we need to do, depending on timing, try to make ourselves as a school committee available to have a meeting to approve it, depending on what people think, how quickly they want to get this out to the to the community. That would be my my suggestion. But so what do the what do the rest of you think, School Committee folks? And or superintendent?
Chairman Geyer, I'll make the motion that we table. Taking action this evening on this committee, by this committee and sending the draft report back to the steering committee. With instructions that we'd like to see it back as soon as possible, even if we have to have another special meeting next week. Because I think there is definite need to get this done, get this as far as we can. And I do believe, as you said earlier, that we have a very good list of questions and comments that were made tonight.
Yep, thank you. And how do the rest of you feel about tabling it?
I'm fine with tabling it.
You have a motion. Do you have a second to table it?
Oh, I don't know if we need a motion and a second to table, do we? I I think that we can just have a request to table and but if you like, we'll. Is there a second for?
I second Joe's motion.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
To table. Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
Okay, at least we know we're all still awake. That's good. So and I also am a yes. So that's unanimously five zero to table. And please, Steering Committee, let us know what you need from us as far as timing. Through the superintendent, what you need from us, how we can be helpful to get this out to our community as quickly as possible. I. When we were all talking about how this might go, there was a, you know, there was a concern that it would be tabled. But the rest of the concern is that we need to at least make one or two decisions to let the committee and the staff and our superintendent know that we're in support of the general direction that that this that our long form document proposes. And so Kristen has come up with a motion that's not on our agenda right now. So you want to listen to it carefully to see if we can at least. Give give the steering committee and all of our staff a direction that the school committee is intending to go. So with that, Kristen, you're on.
Sure. I just have one quick question. So the green designation, does that come out of the DOE or does that come out of the governor's office?
I think the DOE ultimately.
Okay.
But does anybody else want to weigh in on that?
I I I'm not sure, but I would guess from the DOE as well.
I just wanted to make sure that it was worded.
Well, you can put and or CDC.
I I think it's and or it's Maine DOE or or this federal DOE.
Okay. If if it needs to be changed, then we can change it. But here's my first attempt. I move we reopen our school buildings to learning as determined by Maine CDC and Maine DOE guidelines and green designation. How was that?
Awesome.
A second.
Thank you. And discussion then?
Kristen?
Yes.
I did look it up. It did say this, the Department of Education.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have some more comments to read when we so that you people don't feel as though I'm ignoring you. I just want to get this motion done. Any discussion about the motion that's been seconded? Okay.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Oh, Jana. It's already been seconded. Jana seconded.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so let's let's take the I'll call the roll for this motion. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
And I make it unanimously, motion passes five zero. Thank you. I hope I hope you find that. Helpful, Sue and Superintendent Hodgkin.
I do. Thank you.
Moving on along. Two C, Roman numer four C, motion to approve Wednesday as I'll entertain a motion to approve Wednesday as the one day student independent project learning day.
So moved.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
And I am yes as well. Motion passes unanimously five zero. I have to get my hammer out one more time before the end of the night. Okay. New business, motion to approve the revisions to the Winthrop Public School FY 2020, 2021 school calendar. I'll entertain a motion.
Hey, can I move it? I thought you were going to do public comments. So sorry.
I get the motion out. Oh.
Now, new business comes first.
Yeah, that's.
No, 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 it just.
No, no. Okay, so let's do it right. Let's back up. I'll I I'm now looking for a public comment to inform the school committee.
I got you.
On a motion to approve the revisions to the Winthrop Public School FY 2020, 2021 school calendar. So you public go on that calendar. Just so everybody knows, there's been this sort of continued conversation about the calendar. And I've kept on saying to the superintendent and then Kristen's kept on saying to the superintendent, if you all take a look at your revised calendar, the revised part is that the the new teacher day has now been moved to the 25th. Now, the 26, 27, and 28 are not colored, but they are the days that were given from last calendar. So Superintendent Hodgkins has a hesitation to put them in this calendar because it doesn't reflect the number of actual days for this school year 2020, 2021. And Kristen's. Kristen's out of the box thinking I couldn't get there. Well, she said, so pick chartreuse or something. But she she's concerned that. If if any of our teachers or parents look at this calendar or well, our teachers, because that's who's impacted by workshop days, won't know that the 26, 27, and 28 are workshop days and they're they need to be in attendance.
So can we just amend the calendar and put those in a different color or highlight them like the vacation days? Do it opposite black and white or something?
Yeah, Superintendent Hodgkin has a hesitation to do that. And I'd like for him to speak to that, please.
Well, I only it's not a huge hesitation and it 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 really shouldn't require us to overthink it too much. My my concern is that the day, the three days don't belong to the 2021 calendar. They belong to the 1920 calendar. So. That's my only, that's my only hesitation. You know, if we if we if we make some and, you know, Kristen, when she and I talked about it earlier, suggested that we do it in some sort of color and we make that clear on the calendar that those days are not counted in the 2021. You know, I'm 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 fine. I'm it's not a mountain or a hill I'm going to die on. I just wanted to 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 make sure. From my perspective, I thought we have that. We had the agreement with the association. I I couldn't imagine that teachers would not know they have to work on those days. But if it feels clearer for, you know, down the road, 10 years down the road, my my concern would be that somebody would look at this calendar and think that we had too many workshop days on there. But it's all of those are pretty are pretty far reaching or far fetched. So I I don't have a strong feeling one way or another. If the committee collectively feels that it makes sense to account for them that way, then add them on there and we'll designate them. It's not a difficult thing for Colleen to do.
Chairman Geyer, I I make a motion. I make a motion right now that we amend the calendar presented to us to include the information about the extra workshop days in color explanation, however you want to do it. But I think it will be clearer for all if we put them in.
Second.
Discussion.
I agree with Joe. Just a little note, because as a teacher, I get a look at my dates all the time. And if I were to look at this calendar, I mean, I know I agree with you. I should know that I've got to work those days, but it's also an explanation to 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 the town, to the taxpayers. And it could just say, you know, days made up from the 1920 calendar.
Yep, yep.
I agree.
Any more discussion? Are we ready to vote?
Hey. Are we just are we voting just on those three days or on the calendar in general? I'm confused.
We're voting on the whole calendar, but we're going to make one additional request that the 26, 27, and 28 of August be put in a different color and it be explained that these are days that have really been taken from the 1920.
Okay, I I did want to add something else. There, would it be helpful for families to because because the Wednesday learning days are only for the first quarter, would it be wise to specify those days as different?
That's an interesting thought.
That's a good.
Yes.
Do you think about that, Superintendent Hodgkins?
I think it's a great idea. I we missed that completely. You know, particularly in light of this, you know, the the reasoning for for designating those days. I think it makes perfect sense to to note. And I don't know how you're going to do it, though, because right now we're planning just the first quarter. What happens if you decide to extend it? You're going to you're going to reissue a new a new calendar at that point? I don't know.
If we have to.
I like the idea personally.
I think you're going to have to put an explanation in there because
Yeah.
the fact is, you know, this could be continued the whole year. I'm not optimistic it's going to be over after the first quarter. That's all.
Yep.
If we make it to the first quarter.
Well, that's true.
Oh, Jana.
Excellent point. I would agree with her.
But you know, that well, it's not a problem to me. That's to just put an explanation and say
Yeah.
that this calendar will be adjusted periodically to reflect the situation.
Everything else is pretty fluid. We've made that pretty clear. And so apparently the calendar is no exception.
Can I can I just clarify? So our first day of school for.
Tuesday.
For, no, it's actually the first day for first grade through 12 is Tuesday, September 8. So then the ninth is going to be our first remote learning day.
That's exactly what I was going to get at. Yes.
And is that is that model going to be okay, Mr. Hodgkin?
I I honestly think that's a great plan to have a a remote day, a second day, because we will know a lot after that.
That's right, we will.
Okay. Good suggestions, folks. Are we ready now to vote on on the calendar with those two additional suggestions? One is to different color with an explanation for August 26, 27, and 28. And for the Wednesdays of the first quarter to have a second different color with an explanation for those as well. We good?
Yes.
Ms. Shumway?
Yes.
Mr. Petrowski?
Yes.
Ms. Dykett?
Yes.
Ms. Bells?
Yes.
And I as well unanimously passes. Okay, we're moving right along. So let me read. So the for the community that is still with us, this is an opera, this is a general public comment that has to be have something to do with education in Winthrop. But doesn't have to be specific to anything on a long form. So this is public comment. And while I give you time to do that, I will read the comments that people have put up while we were doing other business. From Ms. Anisuski, I saw a parent yesterday who applauded the Winthrop Public School Committee and said, living in Winthrop is like living in Disneyland. She was so happy that Winthrop is offering the opportunity for four days of in-person learning. We are the only area school that is offering this plan and parents that I have spoken with are all so positive. Thank you all. And then from, oh, Jana wrote to everyone, thank you to all of you who who came to this meeting and all. and all that have put, put in all the time for this plan. It is much appreciated. And from this faucet, Maine Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, and Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Maine CDC have developed a system to categorize counties. Yep. And from Larry at Northeast, possibly add the end of each quarter to, to the calendar is a suggestion. It's not clear on the calendar. And then from Jana, I don't believe all schools go by quarters. And all of our buildings don't go because the middle school's been going by thirds. So.
Yeah.
When the teachers get their teacher handbooks for each one of the buildings, they'll have a calendar in there that's specific to the building. And on those calendars is where you usually find the beginnings and ends to quarters or thirds. I don't see. Oh. Mr. Hodgkins wrote November sixth is the end of the first quarter. That is the date we said we will reassess this question. Gotcha. Thank you. Okay. Okay, I don't see any other public comments. School committee comments. Ms. Shumway?
I just have one. I just wanted to remind, well, besides the general, thank you to everybody for all of their work. It, it really has been a team effort and I appreciate it all. We said it a couple of times tonight, but I just wanted to make sure that I said it again. And second, nomination papers are due September fourth. So if you want to join the fun, there are two openings on town council, two for school committee and three for library trustee. And you need to go to the town office and state your intent for taking out nomination papers, getting your signatures back by September fourth.
Who was up?
What's that?
Who's up on the town council?
That, I don't know that.
And usually it's what, about twenty-five signatures?
Yeah, twenty-five or thirty. And I don't know if any nomination papers have been taken out yet either. I didn't check with Lori today. So.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Petrowski? Your school committee comments?
Kevin Guyer, thank you for running a very productive meeting tonight.
Even though it's eleven twenty-five.
Yeah, even though I have missed all my favorite, well, not my, the red flops did flop again tonight, so I guess. Thank you very much. That's.
You're very welcome. A lot of people put a lot of planning into, into getting us this far. So, thank you. Ms. Dykett?
No, just thanks again to everyone who's working and to Colleen who dropped off my packet for me.
Yes, she dropped off mine too. Thanks, Colleen.
I appreciate it. I, and I, and had she not called to ask me, I was going to be at the school. I thought only Jim was going to be on Zoom. So I appreciate that, Colleen. Thank you.
Oh dear. Thank you. Ms. Bells?
I just wanted to say I, I hope everybody sleeps really well tonight.
It's a good day at first.
So true. Well, maybe you should just pull out that inflatable mattress, Mr. Hodgson.
Yeah.
And for me, again, thanks to everybody. I really appreciate the community input. And thank you to all of, to Mr. Hodgkins and our school committee people that have also hung in there. So I think that we will get a good product out because of everybody's help. The more minds that are helping out, the merrier. So with no further ado, Ms. Bells?
Actually, I do have one more thing. We
Okay.
Are we going to have another meeting to approve of the long form?
Well, yes, we do have to approve of the long form, but the way I thought that would happen is I, I'd wait to hear from either you or Superintendent Hodgkins when you would like that meeting, which would probably be after you have a steering committee meeting. That's what I was thinking. Do you, do you have some other thoughts?
Oh, I, I didn't know. I was just thinking it's probably sooner better than later, right?
Well, let me, let me just get a quick consensus. Our people, when is your next steering committee meeting, Sue?
We don't have one, we don't have one specifically scheduled yet. And I had talked to, I don't know if I mentioned to Sue when you were in today or not, but we may need to look at an extended time. Right now we're meeting for what was supposed to be an hour, but it's always been two hours or more every Wednesday. We didn't meet this Wednesday. So after this meeting, I was going to reach out to the committee to see if we can find a, a good solid four-hour-plus block to, to sit down again. I don't know that we could pull that off before, you know, before Wednesday or Thursday of next week.
So our, our next regularly scheduled meeting is the twenty-sixth.
Yep.
So do you feel Superintendent Hodgkin that you have enough guidance then from one of our motions tonight? You know, to, to get school going? And then maybe be ready on the twenty-sixth with the new long form or the updated long form?
Yeah, I think there's enough, and I, I don't know if I mentioned this, you know, I've had this conversation with a lot of people today, but I'm, and I think we're losing Jana. Jana, wake up.
Yeah, I'm just putting it in my calendar.
Okay. I'm sorry, but the, we, I forgot where was I going with that?
Let me see, we were talking about the calendar and, and I asked you, do you feel as though you have enough guidance to?
Oh, what I was hoping to do, and I'd mentioned, meant to say it earlier, is I'm hoping to do a frequently asked questions type of document for the, for the community.
Right.
And so I think there's enough, I've got enough of a feel for what you guys are looking for to be able to do that to the community to say, you know, the draft document is still on the website. We met till eleven-thirty to, to have some revisions. The, the committee will be viewing it, the steering committee will be reviewing it. And then the, the, the school committee will be voting on a final draft on August twenty-sixth. I feel, I feel really comfortable with that.
Okay. My only, only quick comment about that is I wouldn't want the twenty-sixth to delay communication with parents. Like I know that Nurse Brewer and Dr. McConnell were talking about the information from the DOE, specifics about masks, et cetera, hand washing. If all of that stuff can be sent out prior to the approval of the long form, then I would, I would be in support of that. I don't want the, 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 the draft, just because the long form is still in the draft, I wouldn't want things to be held up until it becomes a final.
Yeah, that, I mean, for instance, in the draft as it stands, I have the link to the protocol for, from the procedure for CATC. So I, I would envision the same thing. And, you know, any of those things that are not specifically ours that we know we're going to include, I don't see any reason why those don't get sent out as soon as we agree that's what we want to send out.
Okay, excellent.
I, I was going to volunteer to help in any way I can to get that information out too. I'll just throw that out there.
Yeah.
I'm happy to help with whatever needs to be done for that.
So I'm going to try to reach out to the back-to-school committee tomorrow and see if we can get a date, a block, a good four-hour chunk sometime next week.
Sarah Fuller and Scott Eldridge are up on the town council.
Ah. That's right, Kristin, we have stood next to Sarah Fuller.
That's true. I should have remembered that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Susan, you ready now?
I am. I move to adjourn.
Oh, wow. Gets seconded by both Joe and Jana. Discussion? All, all I want to hear is if there's any nays. Any nays? Okay. So, thank you people for staying pretty alert at my eleven-thirty-two. I appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. You're up at eleven-thirty-two, too.
Kind of sound asleep already.
Already?
Well, I would be too. Yeah, a long time ago. Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much, everybody. We're adjourned.